Okay. So we will open the planning board meeting for this 2021. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the website. With both video and audio. It's fine, you just need to let me know. Okay. In a hybrid manner for the general laws. We'll get to the town planner's report, Mr. Sutton, if you have something to bring to the board.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to ask you all to join me today, eighty years ago was attack on Pearl Harbor. There's a total of two hundred, two thousand three hundred thirty-five military personnel killed, including two thousand and eight Navy personnel, one hundred and nine Marines, two hundred and eighteen Army. Add to that were sixty-eight civilians. The half of those were Marines. There was also wounded in a thousand, one hundred and forty-three, seven hundred and ten being Navy, sixty-nine Marines, three hundred and sixty-four Army, as well as a hundred and three civilians. I just asked you to join me in a moment of silence for remembrance. Thank you.
Seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Chair. Picking up on some previous discussions that I shared with the board, I met with representatives from Tilcon and Coachit Miller alongside EDP, a solar array development corporation that's looking at sort of site over on Hudson Drive. This was the subject of a tenure letter through town council that was shared with them for a process out there. Essentially, this will remain, if will the earth excavation site under Tilcon with a little separate permit process for the solar array. There are some obligations that will fall upon a Tilcon shoulder going through this process, not the least of which is an updated reuse plan. One's on file is back from nineteen eighty-one, I think it's mostly hand drawn. And so the approach that's been communicated to me thus far, and I'm personally comfortable with, but the board, do you have any concerns about it? Is that the solar group would be approaching first to pursue special permit with having the update to the earth excavation permit, the condition of that approval. And then I'm working with the folks over at Coachit Miller, it comes with a format. As I mentioned, the format of it early reuse plan, just conform to the current guidelines, I think that needs to be brought into general performance. It is a bit of a diagram, certainly at the scale, it's a visionary piece of information saying, this is what you know, the site's going to look like when we're done with there's earth excavation pieces. So I think I can work with them to go put a format that will meet the intent of the bylaw, the requirements of the bylaw and satisfy the board as well. This is a call from Zuri to here regarding potential COVID test site. About to drive up and or drive through, if you know, facilities here in town. This particular one is envisioned over at six forty-two College Highway. If I'm not mistaken, I think that's the build road motor cars, used car facility behind the Yellow Bear consignment facility. It's just getting rolling in terms of a little bit of research I want to look at, see what's on file, what's put on file for the used car facility and what sort of configuration they've been looking at to try to move that test site forward. They do can, they communicated at least that they have light, if you will, vehicles to today's conditions. Maybe three or four cars an hour to the seat out in Chicago area. So it's something that has come on the line, I'll let you give you updates as soon as I can, some information on that. Actually, with Edwin Benton for the potential of a used car sales facility, a small number, I think we were talking less than half a dozen, at least to initiate the process. The site was over at four forty-one College Highway. The total home services, I believe, in the name of the business over across the street. Lastly, I looked at, met with, soon I spoke with Paul Gregoire, he owns a parcel off the end of Lincoln Road. And there's been some questions about discontinuance or abandonment of Lincoln Road out there. This was an inquiry that came through a number of weeks ago, was fatted around. I may have let do some follow through, slip up on that, but nonetheless, spoke with him again today in regard to that property. With the information I have at hand, looking through some DPW records and reported plans online, I don't see either a discontinuance of Lincoln Road, that's not cited in our town records. Nor do the plans of record indicate that the road extends to that particular piece of property. His alternative is an easement through the Soviet Kanaskey language. It's for residential uses or would be a permanent easement that would have to go to town meeting. But we're putting a little more research into this, older maps going towards early parts of twentieth century, late parts of the nineteenth. Do show it, it's to show Lincoln Road extending some distance of what value that is, I'm not, that has yet to be determined. So around, I'm working off of the town records, roads that have been abandoned, discontinued. And in a, in a, in a bucket. Turn the mic back over to you.
Seven o'clock, public comment, does anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? We'll start with the live audience first. Mr. Stevens.
My name is Bob Stevens and I live at thirty-three Tannery Road. And first, I'd like to thank the planning board for your work and acknowledge David Sutton, thank you for that. The members of Pearl Harbor, I did write down my notes, I'm going to make this very quick, so about two minutes, so I don't ramble. In twenty eighteen, I came before this board to ask that the newly proposed Greens of Southwick subdivision provide open space separation from its others, as mentioned in the Southwick FRD subdivision bylaw. The board chairperson instead instructed me to contact the developers directly and work out a solution with that. So in good faith, I invited the developers to my home where on May second, twenty eighteen, Rob Leback proposed a compromise solution, what he called a functional buffer. Developer would plant approximately fifteen privacy trees and install approximately four hundred feet of hardwood split rail fence in a fifty-foot wide space partially above him at home. Dick Fiore later called into his office and showed me engineered drawings prepared by Mr. Leback that detailed this parcel and the fence and the trees. Dick also showed me an invoice prepared by Crestview Construction for the materials, labor and equipment costs that he will pay for installing the trees and the fence above my home. Mr. Fiore and I shook hands and he said I had his word that he would order the work done and in return, I would forego my option to appeal in court the planning board's approval of subdivision. Rob Leback later presented these same drawings as part of the definitive plan at the public hearing. And he explained to the board that the trees and the fence represent a resolution of Stevens's as the planning board had requested and the planning board approved the plan. And I have some other detail in here, which I won't bore everybody with about my coming back and forth. John knows I was in back in August. A year earlier, I was in meeting with Alan Schlesler, the town planner then, I asked him why at the time had the board not followed true on the conditions? And Alan was shocked at the time that it hadn't been done and he assured me that he was going to suggest to the board foregoing future approvals, open phases until that was done, this was in twenty twenty. And then again, John recalls that incident in August with the, with yet another planting season coming, coming to a close. I came in, I know John went to the board. In fact, John did get back to me and said that, as I understand it, the board did not feel an obligation to follow through on that on that solution. So now we enter twenty twenty-two, we are well past any reasonable time for the developer and the planning board to honor the promise they made to me as an offender. I followed the planning board chairman's instructions to work with the developer. I accepted the developer's offer. I kept my promise by allowing the appeal period to pass. And I'm now asking the planning board to enforce compliance with the approved definitive plan and the promises made to me to plant the trees and install that fence. And I have a copy maybe if I could give it to the board and ask it to go in the next. Board had any information for me on where they stand on that or why?
So I would just say two things of clarification, one is and I'm sure the minutes are out there, but I'm assuming it's me you're referring to, a chairperson. I mean, I think my position was rather than listen to and debate here what, what the butters wanted, I thought it made the most sense to have you guys work it out and then have it brought back to us and approved in that manner, which is what I understood was done. We've approved it, it hasn't been accepted yet to my, you know, I don't believe that the full subdivision has been accepted yet. There are things that need to be completed on that, I think this is one of them, I'm not sure what I'm not entirely sure what actions the board, I mean, for two reasons, one is the board's not a border enforcement, we're not, that's not what we do. But secondly, I, I'm not sure what rights the enforcement arm of the town would have at this point in time, having not accepted the subdivision, I mean, that's, that's, it's, I my belief would be that it's not going to be accepted until such time as the plans are completed and complied with. So, you know, I can, we can look back and see if there's any kind of timing provision in there that would allow it, or if there's any sort of way to move stuff along if it's been delayed in, in some manner, but other than that, I'm not sure there's anything else that we can do at this point in time to, to move that forward, it's part of the plans and it would have to be completed before it's accepted.
That's very contrary to what the town planner told me in twenty twenty. John, Alan Schlesler said that the planning board had the authority to enforce compliance with the definitive plan and that it was very common that as the developer comes in to get additional phases of work approved in, in terms of bonding and whatever other obligations, it is done in phases. And that the planning board has the authority and the discretion and it would be very common. And John, Alan thought it should have been done in twenty twenty to tell the developer that this was intended to be a buffer. So a buffer from what? A buffer from the subdivision, the subdivisions, they are beautiful, they've done a great job, beautiful homes. It was a beautiful home, a beautiful one, but in my property, but what was promised to me was a a buffer of trees and fence, in fact, I was, I was told that day in May, they said, Bob, go down to IPF and get a bunch of tomato stakes and put them in when you want those fifteen trees. I know there's someone here that would remember that comment. And I, and I ran down and I did that, that weekend of putting plant, putting stakes where I strategically like to see these privacy trees. This was in twenty eighteen, it was almost four years ago. So, you know, the planning board does have the authority to ask the, or to require the developer to, to comply with, with the definitive plan.
We, we, we can certainly
I didn't come here to have that argument, I mean, we, if, if that was an issue, maybe we would bring that up at the time, but we're four years past the time that this was promised to me, or coming on four years.
We're not four years past the time it was promised.
Four years since the date that I was, that I agreed and shook hands with the developer and said, and he showed me an invoice dated like that month, I mean, the implication was clear that, you know, we're, we're going to be putting this in in the next couple of months and we shook hands. So, I mean, he showed me the invoice and he stated Crestview Construction, it had everything on it, the kind of invoice you give to somebody before you did a job. So, no, there was no, there was no expectation that I was going to be waiting three or four or five or six or ten years. It was, it was a condition of me not really in, in appealing the decision, which would have been my right, it certainly isn't a butter and, and I had discussed that with the developer. And they said, no, 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 no need to do that, let's shake hands right here, let's get the lawyers out of it. And I said, okay, that sounds great to me. I accepted their offer lock, stock and barrel, I didn't make any adjustments, any changes. But anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that that's where it stands, I felt that'd be a miss. If any action comes forward down the road and I hadn't at least been in touch to hear your side of it and, and let you know where we stand.
So let me, two, two things, one is I'll let Rob speak since I let you speak as well at this point in time, I don't want to belabor it, but we'll certainly over the next two weeks, before the next meeting, look at the decision and anything, I'm not, I can't remember any was there a bond release that came in front of us with that? I, I just, I can't remember if there was or not.
I will have to check some of the history, I'll be the first to admit that perhaps this somewhere was a little bit of a blur out on my desk. I believe the conditions of the permit don't compel a time thing for that, I'm happy to look at.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it and, you know, we'll discuss it at the next meeting, Rob, go ahead.
I think you missed everything, and it is, is hard, just so you know, it's hard for us to hear what the audience, even what John Goddard is saying, just, just a heads up. But that said, everything that I did hear sounded generally what we had talked about years past. Have anybody had a conversation with Mr. Fiore? And I, I apologize, I've been out of the loop a little bit this summer. So it, you know, if there's anything I can do to communicate with the developer, I'd be happy to do that because I do feel that what was just suggested is consistent. I don't know, maybe are they waiting for a couple of those lots on your side, Bob, to be developed, or are those, are those already built now?
Yeah. There's a beautiful home there, there's people living there.
Okay. So has anybody talked to Mr. Fiore recently? Maybe it's just a communication issue and I'm happy to communicate with them for you, on, you know, on everybody's behalf.
So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it over the next two weeks and we'll loop you in if, if, you know, you can be of assistance without question. Appreciate it.
Just to Rob's point, thank you, Rob, for that input, I appreciate that. I did put in a phone call to Dick Fiore about the same time that I went to see John back in August. And he didn't take my call, but in all fairness to him, I understand that he may be retired, I called him at his homework office. And he didn't return my call, I was directed to Jason and Jason basically said he didn't know anything about it, he had no interest in in doing it, so.
We'll talk, we'll talk through it over the
Mr. Fiore, that's the answer to, you know, whether or not I've been in touch with him, that's the effort I made, because I, I thought I had a good, good, good chat with Dick. We did it all very well, at his office. Back in, that was in twenty eighteen.
So we'll take that and we'll take your letter and we'll look at it next two weeks and we'll try to figure out if there's some way, path forward over those two weeks. All right, anybody else at least live right now have a color comment? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Seven-ten, six-six-four College Highway. Application for a special permanent site plan approval by the hearing, petition to change the use at the site, trying to bank to a professional dental office. You can come on, is there a chair?
Let me roll one all over. That black one's probably safer. That was great chairs.
Thank you, guys.
Doctor, if you just wouldn't mind just stating your name.
Sure, my name's Joe Walls, I'm a dentist in Agawam. Seeking application for the special permits at six-six-four College Highway, hoping to convert it to that dental office as mentioned.
Give me one minute to
That's just that expensive, you gotta put them in a safe now?
I know, exactly. He took all the shapes, imagine that. Just got chutchi.
Time to display the plan. We are
This is a much bigger.
Yeah, is this where you plan to put yourself?
Yeah.
So not in that other development, this is where
This will be at this point, I still got ideas for the other location. Yeah, yeah.
This one's already done, you need one more.
Yeah.
Can you play it for the drive up window, you got some ideas going there?
You know, maybe COVID treatment out.
Notice public hearing.
Drive through canyons, I love it.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, section eleven, that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-one. At seven-ten PM in the land use hearing room, Town Hall, four fifty-four South County Highway. And also via Zoom on an application by Walter of the LLC for a special permanent site plan review for the property located at six-six-four College Highways, on industrial restricted. The property is shown on accessory map. Fifty-one parcel eleven, the applicant proposed to construct a dental office in accordance with the code of Southwood Zone bylaw, chapter one, one eighty-five, sections nine, ten and nineteen. Zoom information is provided, a copy of the application and plans may be expected by contact with the town planner, John Goddard, at his email address. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time of manner designated by the authority chairperson, Southwood Planning Board. Okay. So I think it's pretty straightforward, but if you just want to give us the details of what you plan to do and then we can go from there.
Sure, so no exterior changes to the site are planned, really just hopeful to get a design for interior modifications to suit the dental needs. And certainly with architectural drawings that would be submitted to the, you know, copper boards that need to review that before permitting. But again, nothing outside changing, looking at the parking and spaces, it, I want to say through the calculations, we wrote nineteen needed, but it looked like it was twenty-nine plus two with the handicaps, so I believe it met the parking requirements. Hopeful. Going to be, you know, reasonable application.
Any issues that you saw with?
I'll go through just a couple of thoughts and clarifications for the board. One question that may be from conversations you're asking, I'd do with the fact that this is a site served by, well, septic.
Sure.
So, 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 any changes if you built that system to accommodate the medical?
Sure. Definitely not an engineer, but I did do a just basic research and it looked like the typical tank was about seven hundred and fifty to twelve hundred and fifty gallons. And the typical leach field could handle in a residential home, a few hundred gallons a day. I did seek out some information from the dental supply company who provided me some details in terms of the water flow. Things today are much different than they used to be in terms of the water flow through the cuspid or that's the little area people expect to read or spit in. It used to run continuous, no longer, I don't even think we'll have those in there due to hygiene needs or desires to maintain cleanliness and not have that spitting occur. And even the suction pumps that used to require water for the motor system that were constantly running, they will be dry now. So it's new technology that we have in children's office as well that we'll have here. Sixteen, actually four staff members is what would probably be, would be there at the startup. It's, it appears, I can go through the list of items of water flow and what's going to be, but a day it appears about fifty-three gallons of water would be consumed with sixteen patients a day, so. Certainly seemed like it would meet requirements, it was for residential and I'm assuming with commercial in the original design, again, an assumption on my end, that it should be to handle that.
The, the volume, fifty-three gallons certainly seems we'll call minimal, the system design, having said that much, we'd certainly recommend that you try to pull anything you have and follow the board to help.
Sure.
Owing to the fact that, at least at this level right now, we don't know how many employees perhaps they considered when you designed that facility originally.
Sure.
As that plays into the, the flow capacity.
Okay, sure, sure.
As Dr. Walls mentioned, the site does have adequate parking, I ran through the calculations, yours are conservative, considerably high. I was just looking at the footprint of the building, it's good, the canopy, I come up with thirteen calculated required spaces, less density than for the former bank use. Beats parking setbacks, the site is handsomely vegetated, the landscape, plenty of streaming for the dumpster. And it is generally almost to align what you see on the plans of record, which seems kind of like a rare occurrence, but at least on the surface, we know what happened in the gap, nevertheless.
Okay, so let me just read into the record what we have here. We have an email from the building inspector, Paul Scott, who has no concerns about the plans. We have an email from Paul Miles with the police department who does not see any issues with the plans. We have an email from Randy Brown, who indicates he reviewed the special permit application for both medical use at six-six-four College Highway and does not have any questions or comments. Spent on his end and we have an email from from Russ Anderson with the fire department who says there's no issues, just standard things that will fall under occupancy and code enforcement. And assumes that you will provide plans in the building permit applications. So those are the only comments on boards. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Where is the septic system located now in the leach field?
It's in this back corner, septic, I'm sorry, the septic tank is here and the D box is approximately in this area, there's a measurement, I did pull the document for that, if it's helpful to look at as well. This is the, if I turn it the same direction that this is sitting in.
Over in that corner.
That's right, right in this back corner, yeah, it says leach right there, actually, yeah.
And I guess when we do write up the conditions, this is a special permit, not a modification, right? It's a special, so we would require the board to help, would have to approve of the activity.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from town officials? Any questions from the public or comments from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, then. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
David Sutton, second.
We will roll call vote, Michael's already high.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been a I.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Richard.
Nothing right.
Good catch.
Either say my name, he says his.
All right. Since this is rather straightforward, just simply changing the use. And what are we? Is there a special permit on file?
I would think there would be, it's in a business restriction, or is it industrial?
Industrial.
It's an industrial restricted zone.
Yeah. All right, so actually my inclination that, because we're going to have to do a full special permit that goes through all the factors. Like it makes sense to I think it makes sense to draft that up and vote on it next meeting. You know, I don't see that there'd be any issues, but just her process will know what we're exactly voting on. If people can have input into that. Into the writing of it, if there's a modification, we could probably do something now, but it's a full permit. Sorry, all right?
All set, beautiful, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck.
No, it'll just be in sort of, you know, whatever. All right. Seven twenty, public shade tree removals at Klein and Fred Jackson Road.
I need to accuse myself.
That's Richard.
You need a Lorax, you're speaking for the trees?
Jessica, we will be.
Under Butter's notice, so just, just to be sweet, you claim.
How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Let me check the notice and then we'll get into it. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, that the planning board tree warden will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-one. At seven twenty PM in the Land use hearing room, Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, and also via Zoom per request from the Southwood Tree Warden for written consent and approval to remove a total of six trees on Klein Road and Fred Jackson Road, which are designated scenic roads. The applicant proposes to remove four eighteen-inch diameter public shade trees of hardwood species located near seventy-one and eighty-two Klein Road for culvert reconstruction. The applicant also proposes to remove one thirty-inch diameter and one thirty-six inch diameter public shade tree of hardwood species located nearest one forty-one and one forty-five Fred Jackson Road for public safety. The proposal is in accordance with the Mass, she uses general law, chapter forty, sections fifteen C and chapter one eighty, chapter eighty-seven, section three. Zoom information is given, copy of the application and the plans may be inspected by contacting the town planner at his email address. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and that it designated by the authority chairperson Southwood planning board and Randall Brown tree warden.
Thank you, so just for record, Randy Brown, DPW director and town tree warden. So as Chairman read in the notice, we are looking to remove six trees on scenic roads, we have these types of hearings every probably two or three years for a tree remove on a scenic road. Per the Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen C that Mike read off. That does require a special permit, hearing with the planning board, before those trees can be removed. Mike, John, do you want to pull up those pictures?
Sure, you gotta.
Just so we can all on the same page here, so first, there's four trees on Klein Road in the vicinity of eighty-two and seventy-one Klein. There is a culvert at that location, so we are looking to replace that culvert in the next year or two, and we would need to remove these, these four trees in advance of that, of that culvert work. The trees are located like about between five and eight feet off the road, within the right of way. And those trees are, are pretty healthy. I do have the ability as a tree warden to remove trees that are not healthy, that are dead or dying or diseased, but I don't think these trees are qualified for that, so that's the reason why we are here, the hearing tonight. So those are the four trees on Klein Road, and then if you go over to Fred Jackson Road, there is a split tree, has two large leaders on it. One thirty inch, one thirty-six inch leader. This is located about five, five feet or so right off the road. And for public safety reasons, we're looking to remove this tree, if you go to the next picture, John. You can see how they hang over. They are, it's a very nice looking tree, but due to safety reasons, it is overhanging some of the properties that have but the tree, and we'll be looking to remove that, the tree for that, for safety reasons.
No comments, the tree warden, sure.
Okay. Anything for the board?
Hi Randy.
What's up?
I went out and looked at the trees. The ones on Klein Road seems reasonable. There's about twenty-five other trees that are marked that believe you're gonna be taking down outside of the right of way to clear for the culvert installation, there were a lot of orange spots on trees.
That wasn't, that was, so just the trees that had the, the white mark and the, the notice are the ones that we're looking to remove, there were no others on Klein that were looking.
So the ones with the orange spots are not coming down?
Not that I'm, I don't know what orange spots you're referring to, honestly. That wasn't something that I.
On the trees on both sides. There were, I don't know, about twenty-five.
Yeah.
I was assuming they, they were outside the right of way and you'd have to take them down to
do the construction. No.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Maybe they were marked for some other reason.
So we did do a wetland survey in that vicinity over the past month or two, maybe there were some markings for the wetlands or the survey work. Was there a tag on the, the orange?
No, they were just orange, spray can. Around.
Right around the same area? Of these trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Out from the road, outside the right of way.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can't explain that one.
Yeah. The other one on Fred Jackson. They are large oak. The one is, is hanging over the highway or over the road, actually goes over the power line on the east side of the road, so I, I think it would be reasonable to take those down, my only question is, do we ever replant anything after we take a tree down, do we plant trees?
So in my eight years here, we've never been asked to replant the tree upon removing, remove a tree.
Okay. Well, this is a scenic road and I would certainly like to see at least one oak placed through, planted to replace the two that are coming down. That's my opinion.
Anything else, Marcus?
No.
Anybody else on the board have anything? Does the tree removal include stump grinding and?
So on Fred Jackson Road, we would not remove the stumps normally. The ones on Clark and Klein, we would have to remove the stumps to facilitate the removal of the installation of the culvert.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, but you take away what you cut down, are you?
Yes, we would, yes, we take stumps and branches away, yes.
And have a clearing done with your company over the past year. Beating my house, but I had a chop at myself.
Usually ask you butters if they want the tree, you know, it's my software, so I believe in the situation that may be taken on.
Anything else from board? Any town officials have any comments? Any public, members of the public have any comments or questions?
Harrison Kupover, down one twenty-six, supplement. You mentioned in terms of replanting, haven't gotten that request in eight years, who would that request generally come from, people who have butted that property or?
I guess anybody in the public could make that request if they wanted to, I don't, I'm not
Yeah.
Never been down that road, so I can tell you.
Right, and you mentioned for the culvert on Klein, there aren't any plans to replant anything that is being removed.
Not in the vicinity of the culvert, we wouldn't want that area, we would want the open clear for the, for the removal, the water flow for the culvert.
Right. I just ask because near that culvert, there's a property that was recently purchased where there's been a great deal of logging and being a scenic road, that part of the road has gotten quite bare. So there is already some loss going on there, and in terms of kind of the scenic quality, that that's diminished now, I understand the culvert's a public work that needs to be done, but I was wondering if people in that neighborhood did want to discuss with DPW or the tree warden, what would the process be for that?
They could reach out, they were notified of this public hearing. So, I do know the property talking about, it did the tree, the tree removal, I think it was number seventy-one. I didn't think there was a lot of trees taken right on the road though, I mean, I think there was a lot of clearing done behind the property, and there's an open clearing once you drive off Klein off the property, and I saw a lot of logging trucks come from behind the property, not necessarily in the vicinity of the culvert itself.
There's been, I guess, significant clearing done by the roads in terms of the visual aspect that you see from the public right of way, there has been a lot of clearance, I'd say that coupled with the culvert would leave that area pretty bare and that was a concern in the neighborhood, but it's no doubt, maybe around the culvert afterwards, once that's constructed, there might be a process for seeing how it looks afterwards, seeing how much, you know, nature kind of replenishes on its own and potentially then maybe doing some, some vegetation. Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Sure. Any other public comments? Anybody on Zoom? Yeah, I mean, it's my mind is an interesting concept, it's sort of, you know, place the tree, whatever gets taken down, sort of the idea of replanting in some manner on a scenic road. Generally a good idea, I do have some hesitation because you're talking about right of ways, but they are, you know, basically effectively people's property that when you're looking at it, right, so whether whether folks may want something or not want something in that right of way, I know it's your choice, but you know, I think there should be some input from property owner right behind that.
I think it's fair, yeah.
So, that would be my only hesitation, but I do, you know, if, if there were circumstances where that happened and a butter's reached out to sort of plant it, I mean, that idea sort of resonates with me, but again, I think there are, yeah, things about both sides.
Yeah, I, I've spoken, oh, I am not, I've spoken to one property on Fred Jackson Road, and they in turn spoke to their neighbor, and then they are both, they are both in favor of removing the tree. And they're the ones that actually approached me to remove it, so.
Yes. All right. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Please be in a second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica, aye.
Okay.
Oh, oh, that's.
All right. Why don't, with a vote, why don't we just separate it out by the road, I think makes sense, so do I, your motion? You accept removal of the trees on Klein Road?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Do I hear a motion for removal of the, except removal of the trees on Fred Jackson Road?
Go move.
Do I hear a second?
Please be a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica, aye.
Appreciate that.
Do we write up the decision with conditions?
Yeah, we'll write up a decision, I mean, it's.
Or we work something out with the Department of Public Works to practice trees.
I love it.
Go for it, okay.
I'll talk to Randy. A little local voice got chucked out.
All we need is one oak tree.
Yeah, now make a note. Okay. Seven twenty-five, one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue, stormwater management permit application continued public hearing. We have someone here for.
Yes, present.
All right. Derek, why don't you, if you could, just give us an update as to where things stand?
Sure. Derek Hale, thank you. I've been receiving letters and working with the DPW and John Goddard, Jonathan, thank you. We've been back and forth a few times now. The first letter addressed near completely the, the points, there's still a few open items, so those were addressed with the second letter. Came through and looked at the surrounding areas a little bit more and found some more information. I sent over a packet to Jonathan for his review and the DPW's review, they looked through that design calculations. Most, mostly accepted with a few more new questions. Excuse me? Then the third letter would state looking for the hundred-year design flow rate calculations. And through, through this process, we discovered a couple more contributing factors, possibly some additional offsite flow. I requested some more information. I'm currently discussing that with Jonathan and may lead into submitting an official RFI, depending on the next, the next week or so on, where we can communicate back and forth, if, if you don't mind, John, pick up from there.
Sure, sure. So, initially we did get the design packet, you might recall that it was focused, I'm gonna say primarily, it's not making it wrong there, on one of the bigger humps in terms of the, from the design process, and that's managing all these offsite flows that pass through the property and probably were, if you will, the subject of not only some of the work that took place out there without a permit. But also led to a lot of, you know, sedentation related to that work, so I, I think that's a, that was an important initial step to take. Derek and I did speak about locating some record drawings for both the rail trail project, as well as the country club drive subdivision, just making sure that his calculations are probably taking any considerations that were built into those specific projects. So, with the second batch of information coming through in a more finer, looking at the drainage contributing one fifty-nine Berkshire, and what passes beneath Berkshire Avenue, runs the old town beach property. That's the next step. The engineers approach again, something wrong there, is to make sure that we first accommodate all these offsite contributing factors, I'm making sure that's going through at acceptable velocity, so that's not causing ongoing erosion through as it passes through the property. That's gonna in ways inform the shape size and location of any infiltration measure for the actual onset improvements that we have to balance off for the free and post-construction condition. So, we did send over some comments on the second round just last, last Friday over to Derek's office, a bit of an ongoing dialogue, is I think what we're looking at here, and I've got some documents to stand and get over to his desk, hopefully, I'll keep things moving along.
We are making progress, though?
We are.
And it's what I like to do. All right, so unless there was anything else that you wanted to offer Derek tonight, it seems like it is worth continuing this on to another hearing date and trying to make progress on the comments that were submitted.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Open this to both John and Derek, as far as timeframe, the next meeting is December twenty-first, is that a reasonable timeframe to put on there, or do you want to go on to the next meeting after that?
That sounds reasonable.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
All right.
We have any comments? Audience type?
Yeah, I mean, we can open it up to board, it's not much new to, you guys have a chance to look at that, those comments, but I'm happy to open it up to, let's start with board comments.
So will we get plans to look at before twenty-first?
I don't expect to have plans prepared that soon, I think this point. I don't expect to have plans prepared that soon. Uh, I think this point, we're still just going through some of the supporting documents and. Some of the historical information.
So are we gonna accomplish anything by having it on the agenda? For the twenty-first?
I think given the nature of this. Property and application, I think it's worth keeping it on the agenda and at least touching bases to where. Things stand and, and moving it forward, uh, because it's deriving from a. Notice of condition, no, what was?
Enforcement.
Enforcement of order.
By who and who's the enforcement order? Not because we decide, we determine that Conservation Commission, it's not. Involved because there's no wetlands or whatever, not, no jurisdiction for them.
Yep.
So it's from the zoning endorsement office.
Yeah, and that, so I mean, I, you know, I'm, whether we have something or not, um, I think as long as I, as long as both. You know, John and Derek think that some progress can be made in those two weeks, I think it's worth keeping it on and at least, you know, even for a short period of time. Just making sure that we're moving forward. Any other comments from the board? Any public comments? Okay, so why don't we, um, put it on to seven-ten on December twenty-first? Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Second.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Okay. Marcus.
Yes, I will recuse myself on the next item on the agenda. Designing of butters.
Alright. Seven forty-five, forty-two Depot Street, uh, continued public hearing. Rob, is that gonna be you? Okay. Alright, so. Let's just open it up with a couple of things. One is my understanding is that. This project was at conservation last night. And the Conservation Commission has approved the project with some changes that were made. When you get a chance.
Mister Chairman, if I could get the ability to share at some point, that would be great.
Or. Yeah, that's, yeah. We're making Goddard do all the work. We could have Rob do the, all the work here. Um. Alright, you should be able to.
Alright. You guys, you see the plan set here?
That looks good.
Well, when. I'll pick up when you're ready, Mister Chairman.
Um, yeah, let me just, I wanted to read into things that we had just to get, uh, them on the record now, and then I'll turn it to you. One is that the DPW reviewed revised plans, reported to Depot as prepared by our other back associates dated eleven-thirty-twenty-one. Uh, modifications from the previously submitted plans are minimal. DPW has no further comment, uh, beyond what was previously submitted on. June twenty-fourth and September thirtieth. And there were some. Uh, public comments. Received, um. Orally through the planning board. And I don't have justice, but I believe these are, my memory is that, um, I'm gonna butcher her name, but Dottie. Vici, Vici, I believe is twenty rails and, um, they, they're all people spare folks, I, uh, I think she's twenty rails, I'm, but I could be wrong. Had concerns about the wetland health, the impact to wildlife, the number of units proposed, access of a traffic study. Uh, and then Richard Gilman's and Guy Barbieri called, um. To inquire about the condominium versus apartment discussion, um, and whether, uh, there would be any condition on. The approval through wire condominiums. And this was discussed with them. Um, okay, go ahead, Rob.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman and planning board members, Rob Lebeck, Marlevek Associates, good evening, representing John Peglero. And, um, uh, his partner Clyde for right-hand Clyde Real Estate LLC, which is a great name. So I'm just gonna kind of pick up where my folks have left off. As mentioned by the chairman, the Conservation Commission just recently approved a revised layout. Um, specific to the layout was a require, a request by the Conservation Commission to increase the buffer. Buffer zone setback along the western side of the property, uh, specifically between units five and I'll call it twelve. Units thirteen through units sixteen were already, uh, you know, uh. Uh, jurisdictional distance away from the resource areas, so, um, they wanted us to push those away, um. Pretty consistent with their, their, uh, charges to basically push those units as far away from the wetlands as, as humanly possible. Uh, so that's what we in fact did. Um, really, um, it's minor changes that, you know, that's. Deminimus changes to the grading, no real changes to the stormwater, uh, plans have been revised, um, I believe. Since you've last seen them, there's really been no changes, uh, you know, of substance, and I believe the, uh. As mentioned, the DPW Engineering Department has reviewed, and my understanding is that they're, um, satisfied with the plan set as submitted, so. I would be at this point happy to answer any questions through the chair that the board or any of the butters have. Just before I kick it back to Mister Doherty, or Attorney Doherty. So zoning does not regulate ownership, so if the question related to apartments versus condos. Um, so the unit type is what it is, uh, based on the allowed zoning district. And we proposed that under the special permit. That said, um, whether or not there was. A ownership restriction, um, will be based on, you know, the, um, the homeowners association. Uh, as it gets, as it gets, uh, developed and contemplated through the development, uh, process subsequent to this process. So, um, if you need any more information on that, I'd be happy to provide that, but, um, so the units are called. Branches and townhouses. Um, I would expect just for people's, you know, understand. That the majority of these would be owner, owner occupied. And beyond that, I would expect that, um. Uh, there may be a couple rental units here and there, or maybe my, people might buy them for investments, but it's typically not done in these projects. Thank you.
Rob, before I open it up to other folks, I did just wanna clarify one thing on that, because I think there's two questions in that. One is. There's the bigger question of. You know, this being a condo complex versus an apartment complex, which I think has. Uh, implications for. You know, covenants and structures and, you know, the, the way it's set up in a legal standpoint, and so. My understanding of that, and it'll probably make its way into any decision, is that these are intended to be, is intended to be a condo complex. With a homeowners association. But the, the next step down the line being whether individual owners have the ability to rent out those condos. Is what you were discussing, is that right?
I don't, I mean, I'm not saying, yeah, so it's, it's generally right, Mister Doherty, um. That said, I think we should think of these as multifamily units versus apartments or condos. Uh, as, as people would current, uh, you know, consistently think of those condos, you know, owner occupied and, um, apartments being rented. My understanding is there is no jurisdiction to regulate that, um, from a zoning standpoint. So for the purposes of the decision, my understanding is that the, this would be multifamily. I can tell you that based on all of my discussions with the opponent, that they intend to, um, have this developed. As a condo community, which I would expect the owner occupied, much in the same vein as, uh, Depot Square.
Okay, and we, so we'll. We will flesh that out when we. Talked to town council about those aspects of it, um, but I appreciate that. Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions or comments?
One of the things I think we talked about was. Here. Extending the sidewalk from, I guess I'll call it unit seventy-nine, around that corner down toward unit eighty. Just to minimize the likelihood of somebody who's in unit seventy-nine or that general area, like, uh. School kids or whatever are walking to the bus, so they're not walking in the street. Did you get a chance to look at that at all?
Um, I apologize, I wasn't privy to that. To me, it's very logical. Um. If I'm going out to the bus stop, which would probably be at the intersection of Depot, um, I would go that way. I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna backtrack and go across the existing crosswalk there. So I think if that was a condition, we could easily. You know, accommodate that and, yeah, and maybe even, I don't know how much this, this cross access is gonna be used. I mean, unplanned, it looks good, but, but, you know, let's be honest, you're gonna cut across a big field where you wanna cut across, so. Um, if anything, maybe I would omit that and then, and bring it here and then cross, cross down here, uh, to the sidewalk. That to me, I, it's a great comment, I, I think, I would, I would think we would, um, our, our office and the proponent would totally accept that. As a request and a condition.
Uh, anything else from board members?
Um, Rob, where is a mailbox or a situation like that gonna be?
Um, can you see my cursor, Mister Outsinger?
Yep.
Uh, this is the mailbox desk. Um, whether or not that'll be a building or not, it's probably similar to what you saw over at Depot Square and the other communities. Like probably a little, little roof type of structure you can get from hometown structures with the, with the typical mailboxes underneath. It's probably what we'll have there, but there's a little bump out provided for the vehicles, which, uh, provides for three. Parallel parking spaces for people to pick up their mail, um, and move on.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Um, any town officials have any questions?
Yeah, Marissa Kripo, we're on one-three-six, uh, speaking as a member of the Conservation Commission. So we discussed this last night. And as I pointed out, there was the adjustment made to the design, um, some terms of wetland jurisdiction were good. My question to the Conservation Commission last night was the following, and they told me to forward it to the planning board. My question is, we have the orders of conditions, and, uh, for the duration of the construction, we're going to be in communication as a Conservation Commission. To ensure that no damage is done to the wetlands. Plus, we have that area delineated, so it should be clear, we're going to be a vinyl fence there. So homeowners will be aware of that buffer zone. However, what sort of mechanism is there once these are occupied? With the homeowners association, um, to make sure that there aren't violations happening. To me, this is still perilously close to that wetland. I know that there's going to be a fence. But we've seen in instances where other developments have gone up in town recently, specifically the greens, where we do delineate those areas. They're clear yet, and still see them subsequent damage being done, um, by occupiers. And at that point, the Conservation Commission has to step in, look at the violation, but lots of times the damage is done. I'm wondering what sort of contingency there is, what sort of mechanism there may exist before damage is done to a wetland. Um, in order to have some communication, some vigilance done to make sure that things are in order, whether that's done on manual basis. Just to be proactive and not just go to the site as a Conservation Commission, once the damage is done, and then there has to be remediation. What sort of channel can there be as we see more and more developments in Southwick? With this density where there is just in terms of probability, a higher chance of damage being done when you're building this close to a wetland despite. Having, um, these barriers erected. And I was told last night that this is something that would be in the purview of the planning board and having some sort of conduit with the homeowners association. And that's something that may be evolving. Has there been discussion about that for this development or anything potentially in the pipeline? Um, to just kind of be proactive about potential violations or just monitor the health of those wetlands. Thank you.
So. Let me just tell you my. Understanding or some degree lack of understanding, and then I see Rob's hand, who probably knows this better. If you offer some opinions on that, too. I mean, I. I guess I don't know whether it's, it's local or state or some combination of both. But I, I mean, if you have a designated wetland there, it strikes me that there's a conservation associated entity, whether. Again, local or state that has the ability to go in there. And. Could set up a, you know, I mean, I think they could go in there at any point in time and look for, for the condition of it or violations or anything like that. So it strikes me that it's more of a, it's more into the purview of. The conservation aspect, if they want to sort of, um, keep tabs on the status of wetlands. Than it is on a, you know, the planning board.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that would be my personal opinion. Um, you know, I, I saw Rob's hand, so let me see what he has to say about it as well.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I think the, the, uh, the lady's name was Miss, Mrs. Obregon. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, I couldn't, I couldn't hear exactly, so I apologize. Yeah, so it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a multi-part answer. But I think it, I think it's, um, it's good for, you know, not only the planning board and, but the Conservation Commission and other members to know what's in place from, uh, from the safeguard standpoint. So specifically, the Conservation Commission, um, as you had mentioned last night. They issued what's called an order of conditions. That order of conditions is good for three years, um, unless it's extended. So that order of conditions takes care of the construction-related aspects of the project, and also permits the project under the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, and the town of Southwick also has a local bylaw. So you have that piece, which you were talking about already, and you're looking for additional safeguards. Well, a couple of things, during construction, there is a very specific permit required for any project that disturbs over an acre of land. It's called a NIPD Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, um, and it's a construction phase erosion control plan. That's an ongoing plan and it's dynamic. So through the construction process, there's a on-site. Prepared document that is constantly and continuously updated through the construction process by a specific responsible party. So that Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is an additional safeguard during the construction phase of the project. I know that's also another question going forward about how these projects work and, you know, you have homeowners that you're typically finding. That are going beyond what you might see as a limited work that was, that was approved under a certain conditions five years ago, and they keep moving. The beauty of a homeowners association type project where you have a condo project, and you have a homeowners association responsible for the ground. So these people are buying a condo unit that they essentially own to the walls of their unit. Exterior to that, you have, or on the, on the ground, so to speak, of the prod, of the property. Each of these owners have a percentage share of ownership of the land. But they have a, they have a homeowners association that has been set up with homes, very specific master deeds and homeowners association documents. Those documents are very specific about maintenance, so they're equally, they're jointly heavily responsible for the maintenance of the project. And they're jointly responsible for all of the potential violations that might happen for a project. So the beauty of that is that these homeowners associations have the money to maintain these, these, these projects properly. Um, they typically would have like an atrium or some sort of property management company that literally is, is responsible, not each person that wants to put. Uh, a lawn chair in the backyard or whatever they might wanna do or expand something. There're gonna be very specific conditions that are provided to the homeowners association and their manager. And they'll, those will be complied with by their manager, by, you know, an atrium, so to speak, that's just a local company that I'm using as an example. So there's those two pieces. In addition, the order of conditions that's issued is not just a construction phase order. Um, it goes on, and the project was approved with those limits. So should. You know, in the outside chance that a project like this has expansions beyond the limit of work, this is well within the, uh, portions of this project. Are well within the Wetlands Protection Act jurisdiction, as well as the local, uh, jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. uh jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, either your bylaw. So both of those give teeth to uh enforcement. So as far as enforcement goes, it wouldn't be the planning board typically going out enforcing um impacts or or uh expansions of the site. It would be the Conservation Commission's charge as well as potentially zoning enforcement related issue that's typically handled by the building inspector. So there are all of these safeguards in place. You have the Wetlands Protection Act that will continue on in perpetuity and you'll be able to protect this land based on the Wetlands Protection Act. You have the construction phase Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and you also have a project that's managed by a homeowners association and their property management corporation. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil Levesque. So just to be clear, are you saying that there is a precedent then for homeowners association to interface with the Conservation Commission going forward to just have status updates?
Um, there's a precedent in general for a uh couple different, I mean, arguably, everyone my office, contractors, um homeowners associations, uh specific unit owners. And that does happen quite a bit. The project like might take a decade to to build out, very logically will or more potentially depending on the absorption rate. But that said, um, I would expect that the order of conditions that's issued would give the Conservation Commission more than enough um teeth to be able to communicate directly with the homeowners association, their representative uh as well as individual unit owners should they do something squirrelly. I think for me, with my experience going back twenty-something years in doing these types of projects, my biggest concern is always the construction phase to make sure that things are stable. Um, beyond that, um, anything that could be done by a homeowner would be minimal um and would be would be easily easy to regulate and easy to see. I'm guessing the the fence that was required to be put in was condition of the of the Conservation Commission and also not only keep people out, but also act as a monument for the commission to know, you know, or prevent people from going beyond the limit of work. So, you know, it's two, two or threefold in its uh capacity.
Thank you, and thank you to the planning board for receiving the question.
And I think also, Marissa, to Rob's point, what he said before, which is that the you know, the homeowners association is gonna act as sort of a collective. Um, and the liability is gonna be on that homeowners association. So, you know, it when you when you combine everybody into that homeowners association and they have some skin in the game, they're gonna wanna protect, you know, those violations because they'd be losing money from the collective if there was a violation. Um, so, all right. Thank you, Rob. Uh, um, any other uh comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Rich humans. I live on that five iron horse hill. I just want to be interested to know a little bit more about what multi-function unit means. By all indications, it looks like uh this is going to be a kind of a community with ownership, homeowners association. People, the owners or the bylaws that will establish and rent their units potentially. What what's a multi-function unit as as you mentioned?
I think he said multifamily.
Multi-family, yeah. I think he's saying that each of these individual, um, they're up to like twelve units in in a building, you know, I think was was how we were referring to it, but I'll let Rob explain it himself.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the gentleman's name, but um the these units are um are are considered multifamily. By definition, anything over two units would be, I think, under regulations and John can check me on that one, but I'm pretty sure anything over two units is considered multifamily. So if I have three or more units, um, under this zoning district, we're not allowed to do um smaller um smaller um, you know, like duplex type of units. There's very specific requirements on how this um, you know, functions. So this this particular project has two different unit types. So if, just for an example, um, if you can see my cursive still, uh, unit one and two are two-story units that that would each have a single, those are we're calling townhouse units. Um, so they would have um, you know, or feel um, you know, and you know, the design being obviously all stick-built, uh, you know, um, typical residential siding, look and feel um to all of these units, similar to what you see next door. Um, and then uh in four are what we're calling ranch-style units, which would be would be more um uh a sprawling unit, two-car garage. Um, and then the ability to have a s- a first-floor map, which is key in a lot of situations. So kind of catering to two parts of the market. This is not um, under this regulation, this is not an age-restricted community. So you could be marketing this to, you know, a s- um, a single person for a townhouse or, you know, a small, you know, a couple with not too many kids. Um, and you could also, you know, be marketing bigger units to someone with uh the need for a first-floor master uh accessibility issues, those types of things. So um, not inconsistent with what you would see around town um in terms of residential development. Uh, maybe a little bit similar with Wintes or um, you know, Depot Square and some of the other ones, so, but pretty consistent with those.
Any other um um town officials or public comments? Uh, anybody on Zoom? Uh, yeah, Guy Barbieri, I think I see you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I appreciate the input and Mr. Levesque's explanation. Um, I just need to pose the question to the planning board. We've heard the word condominium. We've heard the word homeowners association and bylaws. Is it the, is it the thought process of the planning board, or you, Mr. Chairman, that based on the considerations that these are condominiums or it has no bearing on your decision this evening? Um, but on whether or not they're gonna be condominiums or apartments. And of course, if we're talking apartments, then I have to ask the question about, are there gonna be existing bylaws? Are there gonna be, or is it gonna be a landlord and uh without the the governance that we're talking about under the guides of a a condominium complex? So I ask you if that's a consideration of the planning board, even though the bylaw doesn't delineate.
Um, I mean, I I think that there's going to be a need to run the exact language by town council. So let me just start by saying that. Um, however, I understand, as I said before, these to be condos condos that have a legal structure to them. Um, and those documents in that structure have to be submitted in, you know, association with this development and the plans. Um, and there would be a homeowners association which would be, you know, responsible for common areas. Um, I think that that's a different structure than, say, apartments that are owned by a single entity um and and run that way. So I think they're two very different structures. I've always understood this to be condos. Um, I think we've had some debate about, you know, whether there's any limitations on whether people can rent those condos and and whether that should be applied uh differently than anybody in a single-family home. Um, but, you know, I've always understood it to be condos and that structure in my mind was gonna be part of any decision that was issued. Um, I think my intention would be to close the hearing tonight and then draft up a decision which would be voted on at the next meeting. Um, so we wouldn't be voting tonight uh per se. We'd probably wrap up the meeting though. Uh, but that would be my understanding. But again, I would have to, you know, you heard the back and forth between me and um Mr. Levesque. I mean, I think that would have to be discussed with town council to see exactly what the language needs to be.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Um, any other um comments from uh town officials or the public? Either in person or on Zoom? Okay, um, anything else from the board before we close it up? Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to uh close the hearing?
Make motion to close the hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jeff, you know, aye.
Okay. So, um, we will draft up, go over the past hearings, draft up a decision, create some of the conditions, talk to town council, and then um, it'll be on the agenda and team business for next meeting to uh discuss the decision and finalize the vote on the decision.
And Rob will update C four to take the extension of the sidewalk section.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I I would intend to put that, I mean, he's gonna have to submit a final plan anyways, but um um, you know, reflecting, but I I would intend to put that in a draft decision. I think that makes sense. Um, and um, you know, so I I leave it up to him as to whether he updates it now or or after it, you know, it'll be part in the decision. Um, but, you know, it probably makes sense to update it now just so we can have that. Um, if you, if that's acceptable, Rob, to get to us in in that two-week period of time. Uh, if you have the ability to do that, I would like to try to get it done before that next meeting.
Yeah, I think I think that's uh very fair. Um, yeah, it's not, it's not a lot of work to do that. Um, just just a point, a point of clarification that may help, Mr. I think it was Mr. Barbieri. Um, the um, under one eighty-five fourteen residential zone R twenty-eight, um, it's uh the use that's, it is a residential apartment house is what it's referred to. So that in in my mind, it's it's arguably, you know, principal use may be multifamily residence, residential garden apartments. So, I mean, these are, there's no intention from, that I'm aware of from my clients to make these quote-unquote um rentals, if that's, so I think we just have to use different words. So they're not proposing rentals to my knowledge. Not to say that you couldn't rent the unit if you owned it, or, you know, a couple of people might make a couple of units to rent. I know that you've closed the hearing, so I'll stop with that, but I I think looking at the language would would be important. And, you know, as long as the decision is is open enough that, um, you know, or or legal enough, um, I think we'll all be good. So thanks. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, that's fair, Rob. I mean, I, again, it's, yeah, we we closed the hearing, but I I would, you know, in my mind, under that section, um, just so that you can take a look at it when we talk about it, the next one, I think it's A two C ten, um, you know, where it talks about apartment-type residents complying with the applicable laws, regulations, and codes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, apartment-type residences is what I think it's referring to when it's at apartments. I bet the residential apartment houses is a defined term uh in the definition section back in whatever, section two, yeah, one eighty-five-two. Um, so like that's where I'm sort of, and and also past experience, just I think that there's different legal structures there. But again, I will run that by town council and will uh will work on the language at the next, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. You want to stop the share there, Rob? Thank you. Okay. Eight o'clock, wireless communication services for bylaw provisions continue public hearing. Send around that email to everyone.
Yeah, and I think everyone has paperwork on it.
Uh, cause that seemed like a good idea to me, uh, so to be fair. But my initial uh look at it, it seemed like a useful um exercise if we can figure out the financing. Um, any thoughts from the board on utilizing a consultant in looking at this bylaw and coverage in town and uh what you suggest there?
I think it's fantastic we were able to find somebody selling to us.
We did.
We heard all about Jessica and her nitpicking.
That was the usual response.
Yeah.
Of course, he is from Medfield, Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, that's the key.
Appreciate John looking into it and finding someone.
Not the first phone call uh that was made by far.
I think we have a hurdle to get over for sole source. Use of the consultant.
His projected figures are beneath any uh requirement restrictions that would make this go up uh for proposal proposals.
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the information that was supplied with that email?
It's impressive. He's worked with over five hundred and seventy communities on wireless. I only got the one sheet, I think. How about you?
You know, supposedly emailed around. He seems like he's done it for a while, knows what he's talking about. I think that, you know, getting a sense of what we're dealing with in town before we draft these or revise these things is a useful exercise.
Hmm.
So, um, okay, so actually, why don't I just so that folks know what we're talking about, I can share.
Were there three documents?
Yeah.
Everything, so I think one of them was like, quite a few pages.
I think Agawam was the closest community that he has worked with. Closest to Southwick, a buddy, Southwick.
I'm just sharing the CV for Mr. Maxon who, um, Mr. Goddard has spoken to, um, above, let me just read described, um, to assist with the bylaw review process as well as do a test drive wireless coverage, a drive test for the wireless coverage around town. Um, and uh, you know, provide that information to the board that it's considering the possible revisions to the bylaw. And then we can use him to help with the mapping, uh, you know, if we're gonna make adjustments to that, to that uh map. Yeah, all right. So any questions or comments from the board? Any others?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we will. So I think the task um, as everybody seemed to be on board with with doing this going forward. So I think the task for the next meeting would be to look into and the timeframe, and then we could kind of talk more about it uh at the next meeting. I don't expect anything to get done, you know, in the meantime anyways with the holidays and everything. So this is probably a project that would be going into the mid-year anyways. All right. Let's see, uh, anybody, um, first of all, is there anything else on the board that they want to bring up as far as this? This hearing, this the the potential This hearing, this, the, the potential bylaw revisions. Uh, any town officials have any comments about the wireless district bylaw revision discussions? Any uh public comments or questions about the wireless district, um, bylaw revision discussion? Alright, so we have, um, we'll work on trying to. Find the source of funding and firm up what needs to be done for the next meeting, we can talk about it in the next meeting. Leave it under, uh, oh, well. Why don't you put it at seven twenty?
Are they gonna, at the same time they do the wireless, are they also gonna be reviewing the telecommunications or police department fire department? And those kind of radios as well?
It's a fair, yeah, I mean, I, we could talk, I don't know. So I, I think we can certainly talk to them about when they're doing the drive test as far as doing that. Um, I do think. That'll be an important part of the bylaw discussion as to how we incorporate that and what. Um, what language we use to sort of, if someone's coming into town to put in cellular, you know, what sort of. Rights and requests that we connect to them to, to, for the, you know, for the police and fire coverage. Uh, on those towers, so I think that's an important discussion to have, but also the mapping, I think is important too.
Good question. How about the ownership of various parcels and. Plan that would be in the, the wireless district? Is there any option of individuals conveying ownership to the town to utilize the. Various communications to the town for fire department?
So, two things, um, one is, if you, I just need uh names and addresses, so I'm gonna for the record, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Pure and worry two sixty-six.
Thank you, Gary. Um, so. The conveying. Is in large part probably outside of our jurisdiction for discussion, we can certainly. It may come up in discussing the bylaws and what language could be in there and it could be put into as a possibility, but. You know, that's gonna be a select board, um, uh, question as far as the transfer, uh, whether they're gonna take. Ownership and, and what the language would be, so, um, that would be a, that would be an issue that. In execution is gonna be outside of our, our jurisdiction. Alright, um, alright, so do I hear a motion to continue this to seven twenty on December twenty-first?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Right here, a second. Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Okay. Where do we stand? Alright, other business. Do you have right there the word?
I do.
Everybody get a chance to look at the. Draft decision.
Oh, yeah, I provided one comment.
Oh, yeah.
I provided one comment.
Um, I mean, what was that one comment?
Mr. Goddard.
It might be more helpful once I send this along.
I like the suspense.
Part A, part B, part C, one comment. Standard, standard comment.
Alright, everybody see. Is that up there? Let's go through this, um. Uh, we gotta add certain approval. Uh, you know what?
State lot special permit site point.
So it should on top say state law special permit, common site plan approval. Be line, should say state law special permit. Anybody have any changes, other changes on page one? On the board. Hearing none. I will move on to page two. Anybody have anything in section A? Of the findings? Special permit criteria. Anybody have anything in one through seven? Nothing, okay. Anything have any, uh, on page three, uh, eight through seventeen? If you could in fourteen and fifteen. Um, that's the language from this bylaw, but just where it says pursuant to this chapter, just change. Just change it to pursuant to chapter one eighty-five. Anything, anybody good with those? We'll move on. Okay, C, specific findings. Oh, is this the, um. This is the twenty-five foot addition.
We're not out there yet.
Is that, alright, alright. No, what I, um.
This suggestion was to have it under terms and conditions.
Yeah, I'm just, you're referring to gravel driveway. That's fine, let's just keep going. Alright, so one through four, everybody good? We'll go through five through nine now. Anybody have anything on one, um, five through nine, okay? Justification in the decision. Um, alright, anyway. These are very substantive comments that I have.
It's been fixed.
So, uh, anybody having issues with the decision? Do we have a separate section for the, um, storm water?
We don't, this is.
So, we're gonna have to put that into the decision.
Yes, I see.
And, uh. What did this come in? What's the new chapter?
Don't recall specific number. This one, however, I believe was.
Under the old one?
Yes. So, we need to add a little language.
Add the storm water management permit to the decision section.
Special permit, is therefore decided to grant special permit, common site plan approval. And storm water management. Pose use importance for the terms and conditions stated below.
Anybody have any issues with that?
This is your screen. I'm happy to share what I, what I have rolling.
That was the most important. Alright. Alright, any uh terms and conditions, the first one, uh, which is pretty standard. Um, anybody have any changes to that? We'll go. Two through seven. Anybody have any suggested changes to two through seven?
Mr. Phelps has a suggested addition to condition five. One second. The driveway of she pasture, fifteen feet wide and have a compacted surface of a minimum of eight inches base of gravel with minimum. Of four inch of processed stone aggregate. The driveways will be constructed in accordance with the plan revised in the plan two thousand twenty-one. Suggested addition includes the driveway will have a two minutes concrete service for a minimum of twenty-five feet at the entrance of she pasture road.
One comment.
Wait for the other shoe.
Um, anybody have any comments on that? I think that's pretty consistent.
You sure? Hold it back just to prove you wrong.
There, there probably should be punctuation at the end of that, but uh, there is a. There's a long-term operations maintenance plan, part of the storm water, um, report. They're maintaining storm water structures.
Got it. It's two years and three years.
Someone that accommodation was, uh, we're called. Extended or allowed. I don't see it as a full in accommodation. I think there may be room for us to go to.
Alright, we can talk about that some other time. Alright, any other changes before we. Get this signed? So, record or vote, the first one needs to reflect. State law special permit, it's like an approval. I think that's, did anybody else have anything to add or change, or are we good? Do I hear a motion to, um, uh, prove the decision with the changes that we've been making?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Actually, let me take that back.
I take it back.
Do I hear a motion to grant an estate law special permit? Uh, or no, we, we probably, um. We didn't vote on the last one, we just closed it and, right, so do I hear a motion to grant the state law special permit inside plan approval for. Um, one twenty-five she pasture.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
And let me add to that, uh, subject to the conditions contained in the written decision.
I agree with that.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
You're watching her eye.
Sutton, you were second.
Alright, do I hear a motion to grant the storm water management permit for 125 Sheep pasture road subject to the conditions contained in the written decision? So moved. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
You're watching her eye.
Alright. All sets. Alright, so we'll put that unsigned at the end here. Alright. Um, stop that. Next on the list is. There's an informal discussion about 141 Tongamon Road, the approach to off-street parking. Don't see Ken on here.
You won't see him online because he's sitting right there, so that's why.
Alright, anyways, um.
He should come down because it's hard to hear.
Yep, Ken, if you could just come, sit up here.
Thank you. Is it the impression that, um, Rob was going to present? Uh, has he not stayed on? One?
Rob gone. He is right there.
Ah.
Good to go, but having you here.
I'm trying to find my. I'm, I'm Ken Eggleston, 141 Tongamon Road. This is.
Dr. Boffey, 33 Silverbrook, North Granby.
North Granby.
Connecticut.
Alright, thanks for coming, nice.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, uh, can you, can you all see the screen? Yeah, you just have, um, zoom launch screen up, it's not a, uh. Plan. How about now? That is much better. Thank you. Do you see my cursor over the dock?
I do.
Okay. Alright. Um, again, for the record, Rob Levesque from our Levesque Associates, uh, here this evening for an informal discussion related to 141 Tongamon Road. Um, this is the former Krabby Joe's site, uh, planning board has seen this in a couple of different iterations. Um, there was a special permit that was filed for redevelopment, we'll call it, of the restaurant, uh, that exists there. That was by a different project proponent, maybe a year, I'm gonna guess a year and a half ago. Um, since then, uh, Mr. Eggleston has purchased the property, uh, he is the current owner. Um, we are in the process of reviving the property, um, uh, with a little bit of a different approach to the proposal. Um, so I think you guys are somewhat aware, and I know Mr. Goddard had had, uh, lengthy discussions with Mr. Eggleston, but specific to, uh, the approach would be to revive, uh, and, and enhance the marina. Um, that exists, existed or exists, uh, you know, and get that compliant, um, since regulatory, uh, compliance issues, the DEP that needed to be resolved. We've had some successful meetings with DEP, we fully expect to be a permissible marina here at this subject site. Um, in addition to that, um, the building that exists would remain, um, in a renovated fashion. And that building that exists would be utilized for purposes, uh, programming that Mr. Eggleston can get into the detail of, but generally, uh, for a restaurant type of use. Um, the marina, uh, support type of uses and potentially some storage, uh, that may have been subject to change since our last discussion, but, um. That said, uh, we've put together a series of calculations, which I believe Ken's also run by John Goddard, I don't want to speak for Mr. Goddard. But, um, you know, this requires what I'll call a little bit of fuzzy math, um, only because, and I don't say that, um, to be cute, uh, but, um, there's not specific, uh, counts that make, made sense, so we would. Good is relied on what we would call logic and, um, um, for some of the, um, the calculations that we've provided, I think this is, those have been corroborated through some, uh, review of some marinas in Eastern Mass. Um, so generally speaking, what we've done is we've, we've looked at some of the, we've looked at two different types of parking, big picture, right? So we have physical onsite, um, land parking, which is, um, you know, what you see behind the building. That is a layout that shows a reconfiguration of the parking lot, um, for a few different purposes, one to accommodate handicap accessibility, two to be compliant, uh, as much as humanly possible with your, um, with your town bylaw. Uh, as it relates to off-street parking and loading, uh, as well as the zoning district that we find ourselves in, uh, in with the grandfather, we'll call it, you know, um, grandfather and now special permanent use. Um, and in addition, we have the transient spaces that we're allocating, we anticipate having. Transient spaces, those transient spaces would be boat spaces, so, um, we're looking at two different types of boat parking slash boat slips, I'll call them. Uh, those boat slips, um, we anticipate having transient slips in, would be 18 slips, I believe, Ken, is that? I think that's correct. Um, I believe there would be 18 transient slips, um, that would be there to accommodate the restaurant and support for that restaurant during the season. So we'll call the season May to October, not, not specific to those dates, but just generally speaking, we would expect that you'd see that, that, you know, a fairly significant, and a heavy use, uh, in the warmer months. So those would be, you know, slip, somebody could, you know, that was maybe gone, had gone to the boat launch, uh, launched their boat, could come park, go grab breakfast, go grab whatever they wanted for, from the restaurant. Um, the other slips would be more marina type slips, um, and those would be the outer, um, docks and slips that you see. And those be provided for the purposes of, um, a marina, that would be, this would all be regulated under the chapter 91 license with the state, that would be required for a specific marina permit. Um, there has been others on, uh, on Tongamon, uh, specifically middle and north, I think, I'm sorry, specifically middle and north ponds. Um, and the, the difference here is we're really looking at a calculation-based program. So I'll get into that a little bit if, if there aren't any questions so far, are there any questions to general, big picture, on what we're trying to do?
How many permanent marina slips are we talking?
62.
62, and then 18 for transient?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the, and the idea, the idea there is that we need, we know we need parking for the marina. Um, and, you know, based on a, you know, a reasonable, reasonable percentage of this number of slips, and we also know we need parking for the restaurant, so the parking. Other are on this plan, if I can figure out, move this just to the right. So, we're showing that based on a calculation of 40% of the maximum occupancy, which is still being worked out to the T, but generally speaking, anticipate that we would need 43 spaces for the restaurant. Um, we're proposing 62 total spaces, okay, that's land, on land spaces. And then we would have 18 transient boat slips for total transient parking seasonally of 80 spaces, so the 62 on the ground, the 18 in the water, and for a total of 80. The marina slips, um, total 62, uh, a total number of boat slips would be 80. Um, uh, I'm gonna stop there for a second, uh, I know Ken has been doing some research, and I think he's had some conversations with John Goddard. Uh, so I don't know if those, those gentlemen would like to kind of chime in on, on the logic, uh, you know, discussed, um, to date. Through the chair, obviously. Sorry. Yeah. And did you want to add anything, or?
Well, I, I can chime in on the conversations that John and I have had, uh, regarding some of the, um, compromises that I understand have been made in the past. Um, one for a restaurant, um, we're proposing that there are 63 parking spaces, um, physical parking spaces for cars, plus 18 for transient. Approximately 81, I think, uh, Rob just said 82, but according to this latest thing, we're looking at 81. Um, and based on that, and, and having an occupancy for the restaurant of a number close to 95. Um, we, we still have hired an architect who's going to give us those exact numbers, um, based upon parking and, and square footage inside, but if we use a number of 95, um, we're allowed 40%. So, uh, 95, 40% is 38 parking spaces that would be required out here. Um, doing a, a little bit of, of math, um, we're looking for your help there, um, if we have 62 slips. Not everybody's gonna be there all the time, not all 62 of these slips are gonna be used. Um, if we could use a number, a percentage there, we were, we were talking 40% to go to the restaurant, let's say we're talking 70%. 70% of the 62, um, is a number of 43. So now we've got, um, 38 for the restaurant, 43 there, uh, that's 81. Um, taking, then, now we've got a restaurant that's here, we're gonna need employees, um, add another 10, that's 91. And I believe that, uh, Mr. Phelps, um, at the last, um, informal meeting over the, yeah, this, yes, uh. Uh, brought up a situation where typically, uh, you might allow, um, an 80% um, for that purpose, and 80% of 91 is 73. And I think we have pointed out to you that there are 81 altogether, 63 plus 18, um, seasonal type transient slips, which can be included in the parking, I believe, because those people also are coming to the restaurant. So we have 81 available, and we only would need 73, so it satisfies the, the parking, if you take into account, um. A 70% of the marina. Parking. Not 100%. Um, and that's, uh, that's where we are, we just need somebody to say, yeah, those numbers make sense, and that, uh, we can, we can then proceed to our next step. Any questions on the math or how we came up with that? Um, again, we're looking at 63 plus 18, we're looking at 40% of a 95 occupancy, and I don't believe that occupancy number is gonna be greater than 95. If anything, it could be 88 to 90 or something of that nature. Um. John?
Ken, in case I missed it, uh, I was writing furiously as you were running through some of the numbers, I'll make sure I didn't, uh, miss that figure in there. I got the 95.
95.
Occupancy is the target capacity to go for the restaurant.
Restaurant.
Uh, component up there. Uh, did we get employees?
We, 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 did we get an employee, what?
An employee count?
10.
10, that's the 10 that I wanted there.
Right, so at 95, at 40%, we're looking at 38 necessary.
Mm-hmm.
And then I said, marina, you got 62 slips. Add a number of 70% of number that I'm choosing, I mean, uh, and that's 43, so I'm adding 38 and 43 together, 81.
Plus the 10 spaces.
Plus 10 spaces for employees is 91, and then I'm asking for Mr. Phelps to, um, allow us that 80%.
Um, for the board, not just.
Well.
It's the bylaw, so.
The bylaw, so that brings us to 73 needed parking spaces, and then, uh, if we take into account the 63 that I've got, plus the 18 in the water, we, we have 81 available to us. And. You know, so. That's where we are. Now. Any questions for me, or?
That, John, how, did we, was there something about the right-of-way of Tongamon Road, or there was some?
It's a question.
Something happened there?
Yeah, any of the part-time spots are in the right-of-way, I can't remember. That got resolved.
The site is. Unique in that, or a portion of Beach Road is on this property, and, um, a portion of the Tongamon Road right-of-way does pass through some parking.
Right.
Is there?
Mike, on this, on this map here, you'll see, um, that my property line, which is. Back to here, and approximate property line, basically, the three houses that are on Beach Road at the end is on my property, that Beach Road being my property. The town property is right here, that's the property line, and I'm looking to put, um, eight and, eight and two, 10 parking spaces in that space. Now, going back to, um, what you, with the town board and whoever, uh, when, uh, when the previous gentleman came to the board and was looking to tear the restaurant down, and, and build a restaurant, that was Mark O'Neil. Um, you approved back in 2019 that he would have the ability to park his vehicles, um, there, when he gave you his parking plan through Rob Levesque. Um, and I have that documented.
I'm not sure that that's the case, uh, I, I have to go back and look, I don't remember that being.
I.
That right, but, uh. Randy, do you have?
I, I have also discussed, I don't remember ever seeing approval, great, that, that rates.
And what's the DPW position on it?
I would, I would stay away from that, at least, that's the town right-of-way, there may be, uh, need to utilize that some point in the future, once we, we, we give up that right, we lose that for us. I would not be able to. I, I, I wouldn't mind utilizing it, we need to, you know, for the time being, but not for calculating, you know, let's say, parking space.
And that was my question, is whether.
It's.
You, you having the parking spaces there, which could be used absent some need from the town. It's fine, it was, but for population surfaces, those should not be counted as permanent useful spaces for that company.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Mr. Chairman?
Maybe, no.
Go ahead. Um, yeah, so I, I hear exactly what Randy's saying, or, uh, Mr. Brown's saying, um, you know, bottom line is, you know, this right-of-way is quite wide, understandably, they, you know, the town at some point may need to use it. Um, if you look closely, I'll show you on with my cursor, this lighter gray line here is the edge of pavement that exists, so, um, you know, as. Sorry, as mentioned, these areas are, um, are being utilized, uh, there's bituminous asphalt out here now, uh, it is, and has been used for parking. So, extent that we could utilize it, maybe there's a twofold approach or a phased approach where we say, you know, currently, you know, um, absent of a need, as mentioned, the applicant would be able to, you know, you know, pursue parking in the, you know, in, in this area. Um, subject to the need of, um, you know, DPW in the future, in which case, that would potentially adjust the special permit calculations in terms of what would be allowed in terms of, you know, either transient spaces or marina spaces. I think that would, that would, you know, get these gentlemen, you know, highest and best use at this point, and, you know, absent of a current plan, hopefully, maybe they, they get a decade update or more, um, for the town needs to do anything out there.
Roads to put in.
So I mean, I would assume, you know, for, ideally for a while, they'd be able to use this. Okay.
In the, in the event that we were unable to use those 10, if you, if you look at the math as I presented it previously, I said that we needed 73, we had 81. So, what gives us eight to give up, so to speak, not willing to give them up, but, but I'm saying that we're, we're, we're there, we're, we're very, very close to that respect. Um, you know, if I had to give up, uh, you know, two, two slips, we can do that, going from, you know, 62 to 60 or something, to satisfy those numbers. I would like to point out that. Tongamon Road was just done, over, as everybody knows, just last year, the last couple of years, those curvings were put in there, pretty solid, pretty permanent. For the last 30 years, Joe Scudari, as owner of Krabby Joe's, utilized this parking without any, without any. any people's concerns. I know there's no grandfathering, because if there were, I'd already be occupying this restaurant. But.
I mean, I just.
If we want to eliminate that parking, I can, I can, the numbers accommodate that.
Here's, here's where my head's at, and I'll then turn it to the board, but let me just tell you where, I just think of the math a little differently, I come about it a different way, to make it, make sense in my head, which is, I just look at it, let's take it as a restaurant, right? And so if you had us as a restaurant, you would need thirty-eight parking spots for customers and ten for employees, so you'd need forty-eight parking spots if you were just going to be as a restaurant. That would leave you with, well, I'm going to, for a moment, just use seventy-one instead of eighty-one, will take away those ten for a second, doesn't mean I'm not going to count them later on, but I just want to separate that. So forty-eight parking spots, seventy-one total, that leaves twenty-three right there as a solid number for the marina. You then have ten spots, which, because you would have some use of it, even though they're in the right-of-way and would have, you know, some encumbrance on it, I think, or some degree of that should be counted toward that number, because they tend to be used in most circumstances at most times. I need to figure out language for that, and then some factor of the eighteen spots you could put, that's the way I sort of work through this, is, is whether twenty-three plus some portion of the ten, plus some portion of the eighteen is going to be enough for, and I shouldn't say that, that eighteen is going to take away from the, is, is going to reduce the number needed for the restaurant, and then can be used for the slips, right? So it's, that's how it, it's a, it's a minus and then a plus, but that's how I look at it, and so I see whether the twenty-three plus some portion of the ten, plus some portion of the eighteen is enough for you to satisfy sixty-two marina spots during the summer. And with the idea of being, I think that you almost have to look at it a little bit in reverse, I think, with the marina slips, right, where the idea behind allowing forty percent plus employee parking for a restaurant is that you're going to get a lot of people coming in one vehicle, we're going to take up, you know, multiple checks. And I almost think to some degree, that may skew the other way, when you're talking about, you know, boats, that you may have multiple cars per boat, but at a minimum, you're going to need a car per boat, right? So I mean, it's going to be at least a car per boat, if not more cars per boat, so, you know, it doesn't, that's where I start to get a little bit concerned. You know, I still think you have, you're getting there, and I think it's something where, I think I'd be comfortable giving you the right to have a certain number of slips, at least to begin with, and, and then maybe see how it goes, and sort of, is where this is, this is, you know, new math here, and we're going to see how it plays out, I think there's some period of testing and seeing, you know, what the actual, you know, impact is of, of these slips. So that's the way I think of it, but I'll leave it up to the board members to see how they're thinking about it.
I'd like to echo that, because I kind of did them out myself, because that was the way that I was thinking about it, and if we went off of, you know, you suggested seventy percent of the sixty-two, so that's a generally nice weekend, we're not talking Fourth of July, we're not talking about that pristine weather, that you might get closer to ninety percent of your people out there on the water. Those people have to park in order to utilize those slips, and if you use that seventy percent that you had left, it would only leave you about twenty spaces for all land lovers to come in and utilize the restaurant and all employees, like, it just, the potential of all of these parking spaces being shifted up for the boat, and those people are going to say, well, I have a right to get to my boat, this is where I pay to slip my boat, and then you're going to have a car full of people wanting to come to your restaurant, with, I don't think you're leaving yourself enough spaces for that. Like, the numbers need to, like Mr. Doherty suggested, perhaps lessening the amount of slips initially, to make sure that you have the proper parking to service all of your patrons, because you're not just a restaurant at this point, you're also operating as a marina owner, so, there's that balance that has come in.
The, your numbers didn't include anything for the transient.
Right, because, right, so, and I kind of, I took those people out of the, like, I kept dropping your occupancy number down to get to that point where twenty percent would be the forty, excuse me, twenty spaces would meet that forty percent required, because you're not going to be able to get the people in the building.
Go ahead, so another way, you have sixty-three land spots, your marina could take forty-three of those, I guess, seventy percent, that leaves twenty spots, ten for the employees of the restaurant, only ten left for the patrons of the restaurant. For ninety-five people, that's, you know, capacity, that's not enough.
I brought your capacity, your occupancy down to like fifty in order to make it, so that it would match that forty percent number.
So I mean, you know, in my head, you have two things, one is, part of it is going to be a business issue for you, right? And you're going to be having to run a restaurant and wanting people to fill those tables, and you're going to be wanting, you're going to be getting money from people to rent slips, and are going to need to satisfy whatever you're promising them, right? So part of it's going to be a business decision, but where we have to think about it is, we don't want there to be parking issues there, you know, people parking on the side of the road, people doing this, people doing that, and, and creating, you know, a safety issue there. That's going to be where we start to get worried about it. I think no matter where we come out, you know, I think you have to be aware that there's going to be some pretty decent monitoring, I suspect, by the police department during that first year, just to make sure that there are no issues when first opened up with the slips and the rest of that, whatever the outcome may be.
If, if we go with your maths, can we back into the number of slips that you would allow in the first year? We, you would, you would said.
Oh, God, now I.
I think it's right, too, to take out the eighteen, you took out the eighteen.
A portion.
Transient, because in the winter, in the wintertime, they don't exist unless you come on a snowmobile, which you probably can't.
In the wintertime, there's no question, we have enough.
In the wintertime, no problem, you could fill your restaurant to the sky with people coming from the.
Nobody's going to come from, nobody, none of this will be used. So we'll have sixty, sixty-three parking spaces, but only require forty-three.
Yeah. So, so I think it would be good if you can try to back into it then, and see what, you know, you may have to give up whatever. The other thing is, from the approval standpoint, this is in a business zone.
The transient.
So we do site plan review.
That, to me, doesn't.
Shouldn't require a special permit, I don't believe.
It doesn't, so I take that, those eighteen people.
It's a B, B zone.
That's presuming those eighteen, that's only eighteen people.
I got up and looked at the map.
Out of the occupancy, so it's to drop it ninety-seven, and that's.
It's a B zone, it runs, runs.
Well, that's certainly helpful. There's a lot of stuff that's our zone over there.
That's probably the.
Well, actually, actually, part of it is our, our twenty.
Yeah, part of it's our twenty, but.
There's lines right here for our twenty.
This is a B zone, not BR's.
Yep.
So that's site plan review, similar to what we did down at, there's a big Y, daycare, But that needs neither here nor there, but we're.
So if we had, if we, if we know the restaurant's ninety-five, and we've got sixty-three, and we know forty percent of that is thirty-eight, we add ten in for the employees, that means we require forty-eight of the sixty-three. And then the bylaws do say that we're entitled to the eighty percent.
You're not entitled, may allow.
May allow, may allow. Can we assume that you might allow it to help with the numbers, if we have sixty-three and we divide that by point eight?
Let me ask you, I mean, other thing is, did we, did you end up playing around with the sizes of the parking spots to have?
Yes, on here, on here, it identifies, there are, there are, actually, there's more than seventy percent the way it's done, but at least seventy, seventy percent of them are ten by twenty foot, and then there are a few that are nine by eighteen, these two, and another couple over here, in the, these thirteen, and these two are the smaller, so fifteen, fifteen out of the sixty-three are smaller, and the rest of them are all the ten by twenties along here, along here, all along here and here. It's here in the middle, they're a little smaller, these are all.
All the accessible spaces.
These are all full size, so here and here are the only ones that are smaller, total of thirteen, fifteen.
All right, so, you know, the other part, I guess I got to think through on how you do this, but I wonder whether, this again, may be something that you played by ear a little bit, but whether you have a decreased occupancy and structure of the tables during the summer months, if, if you're, you know, using it more as a marina and getting more business from the marina, and that's what you want to focus on during the summer, maybe you have a decreased occupancy during the summer, and you're, and you have it set up for increased occupancy during the winter, but.
I don't believe that's what we're looking to do.
No, I'm just saying that's an option, so, because then you're reducing the number of.
Play with the slips.
Of required parking spots for the restaurant, right? So.
The, the marina is only the extra cream, if you will, for the property, the restaurant is, is the primary. We're, we're certainly hoping that the slip renters are going to be a major part of this success of the restaurant, and be, you know, very active and, and not taking, talk best to that as the restaurant person, but, yeah, we, you know, we want, we want the slip people to be part of a club, so to speak, and, and that's a word just not, that there will be. But if, if, if the board were to allow us that eighty percent, that brings my number from sixty-three to seventy-nine, and, and we had here thirty-eight and ten is forty-eight, that would have then allowed us thirty-one slips.
As opposed to.
As opposed to the sixty-two. If, if we're, if we're trying to compromise somewhere, thirty-one would be a hard number. If we could, if we could agree to thirty-six in the first year and see where it goes, then I would, then I could build these two and not build anything here. But it would be difficult to build, it'd be difficult to build thirty-one and not thirty-six, or some number there.
Okay, so, I mean, I think.
Or thirty-eight would even be better, because I could, it'd be better not to do this one and this one, and just strip to the center, and this is room for twenty, and this has room for eighteen, so thirty-eight would be a good compromise starting, and then who knows, we may pick up something from the occupancy, if occupancy comes back at, at eighty-eight or something, we're picking up seven times four, another three there.
And I think you could probably find a number of slips in the thirty to forty range to start arguably, and see how it goes, I think, and I would want to sit down with the math a little bit more, and get it straight in my head, and this is a good discussion, and I would like to wrap it up soon, just so we get a few other things. I, I would like to think through it, I mean, I think, giving it back to the envelope in my head, right, I think thirty to forty may be workable in the first year, to try it out and see how it plays out, but, you know, that's, that's my quick thinking.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, that, that logic, I think, logic, I think, you know, for Mr. Eggleston, I think that's great. One thing I would like to just point out, Mr. Goddard's pretty familiar with this process, too, we're going to have to go through some permitting at the state level with the chapter ninety-one license, it's pretty lengthy when, for this type of project, and we, it's not something we would want to do more than once, so not being presumptuous in any way, what I would probably do from a state permitting point of view, would be to try to permit all of the docks, it wouldn't give us the local permission to do that, obviously, but permit, you know, the full build-out, and probably phase it, and they have these things called reconfiguration zones, that we could potentially, you know, if we needed to reconfigure the docks or something, but I think we would, just, just so you know, if for some reason you see something from the state, because the planning board is in fact copied on that, obviously, we need to get permitted by you, and this needs to be feasible for everyone, but logically, so I'm not spending Mr. Eggleston's money more than once, we would be most likely trying to get all the docks permitted.
Makes perfect sense, Rob, so I would, I expect that would be the case.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, now, you keep saying restaurant, 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 this is a bar also, correct?
It is a restaurant bar.
Restaurant with, with a bar.
Restaurant.
Entertainment.
Restaurant with a bar. Okay, drinking.
Yes, I have a local license.
I, I realize that, I'm just asking some questions for my own.
All right, so what I'd say is, we'll keep this on for the, you know, discussion for next meeting, and sort of run these numbers through our head, and hopefully come to the next meeting with, you know, a good sense of, at least how we would structure the math, you know, given everything we've, we've heard here today, and the, and the plans that we've seen, and then we can probably give you a little bit more direction at that next meeting to, to sort of move forward with the, with the local process.
Should, should we have it as a item on the agenda, as a timed item with site plan review? I mean, we spent a couple meetings with another project that was doing site plan review, I would.
On the head, that had a more concrete, well.
We, we've got a timeframe as well to work with, and if we could be on for real, if we knew some idea of the numbers before, we have to file this chapter ninety-one license with the state.
Yeah, but I don't see, I mean, I guess I would say, I don't see any issue with you filing a chapter ninety-one license, because you go through that process, that's completely separate in my mind from this, I don't see anything that's going to prevent you to have some slips, it's just a question, I think, of how many, I mean, you're, you're well below the number of spots for the restaurant, so you, you have some slips no matter what for the, I mean, have some parking for the slips no matter what, it's just a question of how many, so I don't think, I think, I see the two processes, processes as completely on separate tracks to large degree, in my mind, but I, you know.
Rob? Um, I tend to agree, I think, I think it's good for us to have a pretty good idea of what we're going forward with, so that we're not changing the, you know, moving the target, so to speak, with DEP, they can get a little persnickety. So I think if we, you know, if we, if we're figuring, you know, so to speak, is forty slips or under, I think that gives us enough of a guideline to go with, and then I'll talk to DEP about how to approach that from a permitting point of view from their end. As far as the next meeting and getting on as a site plan approval application, I would just want to make sure that we have the documents in place before, we don't want to come in and waste your time, I would just coordinate with John on submission deadline requirements, and make sure that we're in as soon as possible, but I really want to check with my staff before I go and say we're going to be on the next meeting with a full set.
So I would just, and then, B-zone, site plan review, does that require, what does that require for?
It requires a plan similar to what's required in the BR zone.
No, what does that require for?
Just our recommendation, oh, no notice, it's just posted as an agenda.
Doesn't require notice, that'd be others, that we need to talk about at some point. Okay.
Guys, I got a, I got a quick question, and I'm, and then John might have a clearer Okay, guys, I got a, I got a quick question. I, and I'm, and then John might have a clearer memory than me. But I believe we ended up, there was gonna be a timed out requirement for the special permit. Um, from Mr. O'Neil. I think there was a special permit in place because this wasn't a, somehow was this a pre-existing non-conforming use was the first question. And then it's, is commercial recreation also, um, a special permit?
Is commercial recreation a special permit? I guess it is, right?
It is. It is under, oh, Randy knows it.
It's gonna expire December thirty-first, two thousand.
We're under that. Uh, we'll look at the horizontal recreation.
Two years from now.
What the definition is.
Yeah, I don't even know if we have a marina.
But I'm assuming it's not under that. There'd be no reason. Uh, if you're requiring fifty acres, obviously it's not applying for that.
One at a time.
Um, so let me look into that, but as far as the date, we don't have it off the top of our head, but we'll get you the date for that. For that prior use. Great.
Thank you.
Alright, so why don't we do this?
There's no number we can come to this evening, anything.
I think people need to think through it, but why don't we do this? I'll put it down for a time. And if, if, if application comes in, we can. Do it as an application. If it's not, then we'll have it as a discussion and get to that final number. But it'll be on for a specific time for the next meeting.
Which is the twenty?
Twenty-first.
We'll put it on for seven thirty. Alright, so we'll put it out for seven thirty and we'll see what comes in, but we'll at least have a, yeah. Try to get a final decision about, about how to run this calculation, which is a, you know, bit of an outside the box. Uh, you know, situation we're facing, so, alright. My only other thought that I did have is, the eighty to the hundred and twenty-five percent, our language in here says that. The applicant shall provide.
Compelling.
Compelling industry standards or, you know, resources to justify going to something different. I don't know exactly what that would mean or what we could get for that. That's gonna be hard, I think. All that being said, I'm just doing some back.
You're gonna, you're gonna set that precedent. We are the industry standard.
Well, that is what we have found in talking with other municipalities who are facing the same thing is that. You know, everybody would like to know the answer to that question.
I, I think you can get to the thirties.
Yeah.
Just without any factors. Something in the.
Without factors.
There's a different way to do the math.
Well, that's what I was saying, without any factors at all, we should be at thirty-six. And then if you give me anything for the eighteen or you give me anything for. Um, not all of the slips are gonna be used at one time. If you can incorporate that eighty percent number, you're gonna, we should be above thirty-six. That's what I was trying to show with the numbers is that we should be thirty-six without doing any kind of. Yeah. Giving away.
We'll get into that. I mean, I, I'm less concerned about the compelling factor because given that area, I think. That probably in and of itself may be a compelling factor with the limitations that are faced in trying to, you know, zone and use in that, in the area of common law. So, um, you know, to me, that may be a, in and of itself a compelling factor, but, um, you know, that's the discussion at the next one. So seven thirty at the next meeting. Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Rob.
Nobody out there has anything to say?
Contemplated marijuana cultivation. Okay. Gentlemen, just give us your name and, and what business you're associated with. That would be great for the record. Whoever wants to go first?
Uh, hi, this is Sharif Osman with Faded Flowers. I'm a co-founder. And the business manager. I actually communicated with Mr. John before. Uh, he actually thankfully invited us to the planning board meeting today. So we kinda wanted to introduce ourselves to the board and, uh. Uh, talk about the property that, uh, we're trying to use, uh, for the cannabis grower that we're planning. Thanks for inviting us over. Uh, we came a long ways and Kevin and I, uh, he is the actual cultivation manager. It's his passion and hobby for a long time since we've known each other at the Air Force. Uh, before we got out and, uh, he actually, uh, went to Alaska, learned it the right way commercially. Came to Massachusetts and did the same thing. Uh, I finalized accounting degree from the University of Texas and we decided to. Uh, coming together as partners and long friendship, you know, bring this together into. A special permit, small size business to grow, uh, just the two of us. Um, we've done a lot of research and with Kevin, uh, with Kevin's experience in the market. Uh, we developed a, a very, very solid know-how of producing a very high quality that requires. Very, uh, high-end kind of, uh, methods. And, uh, we decided to do it in a greenhouse, so it's environmentally friendly. We did all the planning, the feasibility study, the allocation of water, uh, the land and everything. But we came to the obstacle of, uh, uh, finding the land that we are proposing, that it's, uh, barely outside the outlay. Um, Kevin can take the word from here. He can explain more about the technicality of growing that we're using.
Um, and actually, the property is talking about a seven seventy-one college highway. It's that, uh, little. Uh, three and a half acre spot that's just past that, uh, that little community across the road from the hash house. Um, and it's three and a half acres. It's a lot larger than we really needed. But what we're looking at proposing is a small three thousand square foot greenhouse that we're looking to put in the back corner. Um, sixteen foot ceiling at the most in the peak. Um, it's got blackout shading, so there'll be no light escape at, uh, after hours and before, you know, early morning hours. So that there will be no light pollution to the neighbors around it, but utilizing the greenhouse, um, structure for the sunlight. Um, as well to benefit our health, um, and to just try to be more environmentally friendly for the area. Um, we're also utilizing more of a soil method, whereas a lot of growers, especially cultivation, you'll find in these areas. Are using larger hydroponic areas where they're using a lot more water and wastewater. Um, we're using a method where we have almost zero water waste at all. Yeah, using a bottom feeding method and we intend to use an artisinal well. We've actually had the, uh, connected artisinal well drillers come out to take a look at the property already. To see and do a feasibility study for us to make sure that it was plenty of water for our needs. Um, and in utilizing, um. Propane gas for heating with a propane tank hidden on the back of the property as well. And a septic tank for, basically for our little bathroom and any runoff, you know, hand washing, things like that we would ever use. But we're looking to build that small, you know, personal, you know, we want to show that you can build a nice greenhouse and nice grow. In the area without having to build a giant brown warehouse and, you know, a bunch of people, you know, and a bunch of owners driving around everywhere. Causing traffic issues, you know, two guys that just love to grow and, you know, think of it as medicine and want to use it that way. And want to grow some of the best there is around and provide it as a, uh, medicinal service to the state and the community. And then I really love the Southwick area. I'm currently residing in Westfield. My wife's from this area. So this is where she was military also. We decided to retire too. Um, I really love the area and the view and we want to make sure that we stay with that and keeping the property as. You know, as much natural as possible. We're not looking to remove any trees. We're not looking to pave anything other than the small footprint needed for the greenhouse. Um, and no other modifications really to the property at all. But that's just from our side of it. Go ahead, Sharif.
Uh, well, so, I mean, yes, let's sort of discuss the more, the elephant in the room, which is that this is not within. The district that is outlined in our bylaws. Um, so, I mean, unless that changes, I can't see a way, there's no procedure that would allow that to be built in that.
Yeah, um, we- well, uh, part, part of our meeting today is we invited, uh, our attorney as well, uh, Chris Ray. And, uh, he had a few questions and clarifications to the city of Southwick. He might want to proceed and, um, have his word.
Uh, thanks, um, for that introduction. Uh, so as Sharif says, my name is Christopher Ray. I'm, uh, counsel for Faded Flowers. Uh, you know, part of the discussions that we, uh, had been having, uh, with John involved the possibility of sort of coincident with our special permit application. And looking to just get a simple change of use in the particular parcel that we're looking at. Uh, so that we could build out this operation, you know, obviously if we could find, uh, suitable property that. Was a good fit for our proposed operation where there would be minimal impacts of the neighborhood of the environment that we're in, that would be preferable for us. Uh, but the parcel that we've identified is ideal in many ways. Um, it's already in an area that simply. Uh, has an agricultural look and feel to it. We don't feel that would be disruptive by this proposed use. You know, part of the purpose of this discussion is to figure out what, if any, procedure would be available through or coincident with our special permit application. Uh, to seek a change of use for the proposed parcel.
So the only, I mean, the procedure would be, you would have to submit a request to change the, 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 um. Overlay map, uh, which would include, you know, that property. Um, you know, I mean, I, I don't, what you're saying doesn't, you know, completely sound unreasonable to me as far as, you know, the location and what's gonna be there and how it's structured. Um, I don't think it would be considered spot zoning. That's pretty much a. Concept that has gone away at this point in time. Um, but that would be the process and you'd have to get it approved at town meeting, which is in, in May. Um, so that, you know, it would have to come in front of the planning board. Planning board would have to vote to put it on the town meeting. Um, favor of it to put it on town meeting and then it would have to be voted on at town meeting. So, you know, that, that would be the process to change that overlay district and without that, I, it's not something you could do with that, with that property. So, uh, you know, that, that's, I think, where it stands unless, you know, you certainly have an argument. Otherwise, that's how I understand it. Um, and that would be the process and you just simply, if it's something you wanted to pursue, you just send, you can coordinate with John and, and. You know, make the request, um, specifically what you're looking for and what parcel, you know, parcel or parcels you want to be put into that district. Um, and, you know, we'd schedule it for a public hearing.
That's the, I would assume the procedure that we're inclined to follow.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be, I mean, that's the first requirement for you to even have this. Put in an application, you'd have, it has to be in the right zone. So, I shouldn't say that. Maybe we'll be able to pay the money and put in the application if it's in the wrong zone, but, um, it would make sense to have it in the right zone before you put it in an application for a special permit. And, you know, so step one would be to get it in the right, right zone and have it in the overlay zone. So, um, you'd be looking at getting a public hearing in front of the planning board, um, for that, for that change. And with the idea that it would need to be approved at a town meeting, which occurs in that.
Oh, wow.
Alright. Anything else?
No.
No, I think that's all. Thank you.
Noble Sea Crossing, request to release lot sixteen from the covenant in lieu of bond. Jesse, is it just you here tonight about that?
Yeah.
Alright. Let me just grab what we have here. So. Have there been any discussions with D P W about the issues that they've raised? Covenant in the sea or not? Did you?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So as I understand it. The lot has been sold. Um. It doesn't look like. The deed contains the covenant, um, in lieu of bond or is that language about it being subject to the covenant, lieu of bond? Purchaser was aware of it? Is that my understanding? And so, you know, I, to me. You know, I'm, I, I, she's not gonna be able to get. The, the permit she needs to, to, to build, um, there until this is resolved. But. Seemingly she's gone into this with open eyes, so, um, you know, the step for you is gonna be to sort of figure out.
So why can't, why can't it be released because we've met the requirements? The monies that are left. Away. That wants to rest the lot.
Well, I, I guess my issue is, um. I simply. By myself cannot make that calculation, right? I have to rely on someone with more training to make that calculation. For, for me and the rest of the board. I just don't have that training. What we're hearing is that, um, you know, there's potential issues. Um, with. The work that's being done there, uh, which would impact that calculation. And I, you know, I don't know what else to do other than. You know, we have to rely on the professionals in town to, to come to these conclusions and I don't. This, this is what they're telling you. So, I mean, I.
So where, where are these reports?
Well, I believe Randy sent you. Um, you know, what he's determined to be the issues that are existing over there. Well, I think the biggest issue to be discussed is the cul-de-sac. Right? I mean, that's gonna be. Uh, not insignificant expenses.
It's a connecting road.
So. My understanding, um, is that you were planning on selling a cul-de-sac. Was that not your plan or is that?
We have to install a temporary cul-de-sac. And that's gonna be installed within the next two weeks. So everybody has access to those end blocks.
Okay.
And then in the springtime, the road will be connected for. In between lots three and four and fourteen and fifteen.
I don't have plans in front of me. Is that what the plans? Okay. So. That's that issue, um. And that would include a culvert crossing a wetland resource area, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are there still issues with the silks and the silk fencing?
I spoke with Dennis Clark and Yes. They sent me a letter. They were out there and they instructed me to go in little wetlands and excavate out silk, which I did. And then they went out there again and said it wasn't good enough, and then they wanted me to excavate out more. So, I told them I was going to come up with their remediation plan and submitted to them. Meantime, they instructed me to go in there and excavate out more. So,
So,
So, what does that have to do with releasing the lot?
Because, so.
But I thought the planning board is not enforcing this.
We aren't. What we are doing is.
Before, you told the other group that you were.
But Jesse, we have to make a calculation as to whether releasing this lot.
Randy gave you a calculation prior to that second letter.
He did.
And it released it.
It didn't release it.
Yes, it did. The calculations met their requirement.
The only way it gets released is if the board votes to release it. And the board has not voted to release it.
No, you guys, you guys didn't vote. You, you pushed it to the next meeting.
Correct. And then, since that meeting, a number of other issues have come up, including the enforcement order from conservation, as well as the issue with this cul-de-sac versus completing the roads, both of which would increase the potential value of work remaining if those had to go in and get fixed in addition to what the work remaining is to complete the actual subdivision. And so, we're in this situation where, you know, it's a close call. You know, I think, anyway, that was one of the reasons why the board kicked it off a little bit to think through it. But then two other issues come up, which could require some significant outlay of money to complete the subdivision if someone went in. And to come to us and ask us to release a covenant in lieu of bond on a property when all this is going on, I don't think would be reasonable for the board to do. I think it would be, you know, contrary to what the board is required to do. So, but it sounds like, and, and I'll let Randy offer his opinion, but it sounds like if you're planning on, you know, putting in a temporary cul-de-sac to address this before you complete the plan as shown on the site plan, and you are working with conservation to complete the issues with the silk fencing, it seems like we're going in the right direction to the.
And also, if, you know, I don't have time to work now because I am under time constraints to get this lot released, I am going to submit a bond and, and get rid of the covenant in lieu of the bond. And we don't have a jury in place instead of this. And we won't even have to vote to this.
I, I mean, I, I have to look at the language, but I would think that that's a reasonable.
The language is in your bylaws.
I, I don't understand. I mean, I just don't, I haven't memorized it, but I can't imagine that's not allowed. And if you want to do that, that's perfectly reasonable way to go. But, you know, I, it, it sounds like you're moving in the right direction. And if, if your intent is to complete according to the site plan and you're, and you're resolving the silk issue, it seems like you'd be back in a position where the value would outweigh the, the work to be completed. I mean, I, I think you get to that point pretty quickly, but I, I could be wrong. Randy, the, I mean.
No, I, I, I agree. Like, you know, I had asked Jesse straight out a month ago, you know, what are you doing with a cul-de-sac? And I got no response. You know, I'll, I'll get back to you later. So, today, just now, I heard no response from Jesse about what is intended. So, in half a year, they plan to bring up there's a road through the cul-de-sac or through the intersection, actually, most likely. So, that, that is in their business. So, today, just two minutes ago, we've not had.
Right. So, I, I mean, I, right now, I, nothing has changed for us to be able to grant that release. But, again, I, and I don't.
What do you mean? No things changed. I just responded to remarks.
Right. But you still have an enforcement order which dealing with the conservation commission that has to be resolved, which is going to, again, increase. We're just looking at two numbers, right? These things that we're talking about right now increase the value of what would have to be done to complete that subdivision. That's one number. The other number is, you know, what, what the value is.
It just seems like we're kicking the can down the road. We're continuously.
We're not kicking the can. We're, we're.
You'd answered the email three weeks ago instead of six months ago.
But I am here receiving my address, my future address will be 21 Noble Street Crossing. I am lot owner 16. Just to bring a little more background to my story and why I signed off, well aware of this covenant. I do want to let you know, just a little background about me and a single mom. I bought this lot with my life savings. I just have me and my daughter currently living at a living or auto circle in my parents' basement because my parents were like nice enough to let me come and live with them. I bought this lot on September 15th. I'm at the final stages of trying to get my building permit for me and my daughter to have a home in the town of Southwick, where at the same time I grew up in. My maiden name is Brown. I lived on North Elm Yard. I've grown up in this town, and I plan on staying here. This one lot that we're asking to be released is a home that I plan on having for me and my daughter. I have a wonderful job, and I plan on staying for a long time. This one lot out of many lots that are on this I thought nothing of it, taking a minimum risk because the development is up and running. So, you can see, you can go by, there's a new house built on this Noble Street Crossing on the street this week. This development continues to grow and houses continue to be built. I thought nothing of signing up for this. The one lot, while there's other lots still on the covenant, I thought was fearful enough for this. So, I hope this helps on people's picture of lot 16 owner in releasing this lot because it means, it means quite a bit to me.
So, Jesse, I don't, to me, in my mind, nothing has changed from when last we talked about this. And in fact, additional issues that would increase the value of work to be performed have arisen.
I don't understand the, and another thing to bring up, I didn't have the chance to go to a conservation meeting yesterday, but I would have brought it up then. And because we're discussing it now, is in the four years that I've owned this land, I haven't had one violation. And all of a sudden, now I have violations. And this, this silk that they're, they're speaking about has been in there. There's, you know, it's not like, like, I created it, everybody did. And, and it's, you know, it just seems like, hey, here we go again. We're just adding things up and kicking the can down the road. And all I'm do, all I'm looking for is to release this lot, and I'm going to post you guys a bond. And then we don't even have to ever have this discussion.
And if you want to do that, you are more than willing, you're more than, you know, able to do that.
And it secures your situation even better.
And that's fine. If you wish to do that, then.
But I'm looking for something in turn. I want the lot. Yes.
If you, if you post the bond, then the lot gets released.
But I, I'm telling you, he already gave you the numbers.
I have them right here.
I know that, but it takes time to go and put a bond in place.
And there's no way that the town is going to release this lot from the covenant lieu of bond with a promise that you're going to put a bond in place in the future. It's just, it would be negligent for us to do it. We wouldn't do that. You wouldn't do that. You'd be giving up your rights without anything in writing that would, that would secure you. So, that's not happening. And like I said, I mean, the letter that we have talks about 544,000 total value of the work remaining versus 570,000, which is the value of those lots minus lot 16. That's a $26,000 difference that provides a cushion for the town. And two things have popped up, one of which seems like, you know, according to what you're saying here today, is going to be resolved in a, in a, you know, in, in, installed according to the site plan. The other is still an outstanding issue. And so, when you're talking about $26,000 as a cushion, to, you know, with these numbers, and these numbers can be, you know, our, our estimates, that's.
Yeah, those, those are conservative to the town.
It's, it's still concerning when you have $26,000 cushion and you have the potential to have to deal with all the conservation issues if you had to complete the work. So, if you want to post a bond, then everything gets cleared and, and the lot gets released. But I, you know, my suggestion would be to do two things. One is you can pursue the bond if you want, but I would also work on getting that conservation issue cleared up. Once that's cleared up, I, you know, a lot may very well get released. I mean, it's, it's, I, in my mind, when we had that first meeting.
I just don't understand how you sat here at the beginning of this meeting and said you don't enforce that. You're enforcing this.
I'm not enforcing anything.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Well, any on the board want to?
The other thing I can think of, in, in the interest of really of the future homer, is there another available lot that could be added into the mix of the covenant and release 16 in its place?
I, I think this is all that's left, right? You have six slots remaining.
Solar panels, right?
In addition to lot 16, I think. I mean, I, I, I could be wrong. Tell me if I'm wrong, but that's.
My lot, eight, nine, two.
That are not in the.
Well, no, they're not in the covenant.
Do one for one. Then, then, then do a substitution. Put one of those in and take those for 16 now. I, I mean, but again, we'd have to check the value of it, and I think it's Randy to, to do so, but that's an option right there. If you have lots remaining that aren't in the covenant, you can substitute. That's fine. As long as there's value in that covenant that would cover the town if they had to complete the work.
So, what do you mean from the letter?
Well, ultimately, there's going to have to be a document signed and filed with the registry, but, but at, at a minimum, yeah, a letter so that Randy can look at it, do this same calculation with, with, with that, you know, taking out lot 16, putting in or eight or nine or whatever it is. I don't know anything about these lots, so I can't tell you anything about them. And figuring out whether that's going to work. And probably taking into account what, what happened if this silk fence, this silk issue had to be remedied in some way. So, you know, that would be the next step is to provide that for Randy. Let him send us a new letter, and we can take it to him. If it resolves this issue, we can vote on it at the next meeting. All right.
So, I want to be put on the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep you on in the, in the other business as we did tonight.
What do you think's funny, dude?
No, I'm, I think.
You think this is funny?
No, actually, I think there's a potential here of achieving a solution that's going to be agreeable to most parties. Not everybody's going to be happy, but usually, that's a sign of a good deal, if everybody's not fully happy.
All right. Next item, discussion of the draft that is in position for major development moratorium.
Now the draw won't shut.
You sent up, you sent something in. So, this is the discussion we sort of continued on about the moratorium. I think Diane submitted some, is it proposed changes, Diane? Oh, yeah. I have it right. So, let me, can I share this screen? So, you have those. All right. So, this would create effectively a one-year moratorium. Effectively, yeah, effectively one-year moratorium. And it's designed, Diane, correct, as long as you meet any one of these five items, the moratorium would have flow. Which would be a trip-based requirement, a square footage requirement for new buildings, a dwelling unit requirement of 50 subdivision requirement of 50 lots and additions that would satisfy both the trip and square footage requirements. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, leave it to the board members as to whether they have any comments on these additions, whether this pushes the ball forward in any way, whether there's areas to discuss aside from this.
Well, not even really getting into the overall big philosophy, full stop of the discussion about whether or not we should do a moratorium like this. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the proposal first. I think the addition of impervious surfaces greater than a percentage, I think the TBD percentage.
Some percentage.
Yeah, a lot size kind of makes sense. I think there's probably some lots that are pretty big. Maybe 10%. You could get a pretty big impervious surface. So, you might, might be, we want to consider if we're going to go for it at all. Some maximum amount of impervious. There's different, yeah. I think you want to bound it somewhere, you know, 10% of a 200-acre plot is 20 acres, right? So, it's a big picture. And then, for number five, the bold text here, this does really not affect existing buildings. There are lots that are not big enough to accommodate the construction. I'm not so sure I understand it, or maybe I just don't understand.
There was a concern about an existing building already in town who wanted to put on an addition.
Right.
They wouldn't really hit these triggers because from the analysis I did from the town records, zones, buildings don't really have enough land to accomplish hitting trigger one or two.
Yeah, that's why I think I don't, I think, well, I think I don't understand it.
How do you go about determining that, especially when you're considering that it's, you're not just talking about the total size of a building, but you're talking about square footage?
Right.
So, like, if somebody has a building that's in existence and they want to go up, and then where are you calling the seven ones? How do you? How do you know that no current business in town is close to seven hundred and fifty? And if they add ten employees, it's gonna trip over seven fifty and you just screwed a company.
On the traffic, I don't love that.
Okay.
I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about that. Just to make sure I understand. So for, I'll take for example from the chart, I was starting to go through the chart you had before, Wally computer, right? Fifty-one thousand square feet on roughly six and a half acres. I believe, based on my interpretation, I think what you're getting at here, if they added a nine thousand square foot addition, they're now over sixty thousand square feet, they tripped into this. Okay, absolutely. You can squeeze nine thousand square feet on the seven acres or six and a half acres. That's why I don't understand.
Then he would be able to do it. Because it hits.
You said this is not really affect existing buildings. That's right.
Okay, there's one. Sorry. You're right. You're right.
Right, but.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
If I'm a big Y, and I have fifty-nine thousand square feet, I want to build a two-hundred square foot, whatever, I've tripped to sixty thousand square feet.
I'm sorry, start, start.
Big Y, fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-one square feet.
Yeah.
I added two hundred and fifty square foot outbuilding or exactly closet. I've tripped the threshold. Just want to make sure I really understand what you're doing. It's not a.
Are they gonna add a two hundred square foot?
Who are you to say?
Sure. Why, why, why wouldn't they? They might. My whole point is this, just to make sure I understood, it's not the addition of a sixty thousand square foot addition. It's a addition that crosses that sixty thousand.
It would trigger that.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. Or the seven fifty trips or anything else, anything that pushes you over the threshold regardless of how full the threshold you are now. I understand. I'm just trying to gather, are we? Are we talking about a major development is a large addition to an existing facility, i.e. a sixty thousand square foot addition to an existing facility? Or any addition that just crosses over that threshold of sixty thousand for the total existing facility? And you answered my question, so I understand where you're coming from.
That crosses that, well, it says that would exceed criteria one to.
Personally, I'm gonna say that I under, I understand your definition. I understand what you're getting here. I'm not so sure I'm ready to constitute a, a few thousand square foot addition to an existing facility that's already fifty-nine thousand square feet as a major facility or as a major development. I think we need to kind of work on that definition.
That one, I, I mean, I think I would agree with that, that, you know, big Y is the example, right? They wanted to put a an area for recycling off the, you know, left-hand side, right, and build a section of that. Is that really what this is designed?
If they want to do it to Y.
No, but I mean, is that, is that a major development?
Is that really? Is that the attitude you want to have, Diane? Is that, oh, well, you just have to wait a year?
No. Do they want two hundred square feet or do they want to be two hundred thousand square feet?
And then they come before the planning board where we enact our special permit, permit review criteria and make sure it's done correctly and that it fits, right?
That's not important for us.
Alright.
So what's the, I mean, so in my head, when I think of something like this, why I think it's a good idea, it's only if it is narrowly tailored to address the harm that is trying to be dealt with. And the harm to me is if there are one of these large development applications that come in. And so theoretically, if big Y wanted to add another thirty thousand square feet, I don't know, but it doesn't put that as a theoretical. Maybe that's a, you know, because now you're going from fifty or whatever it is to, you know, eighty or ninety, whatever they are. That may be an issue. But if they're just putting on a small addition and that hits them over a number, I don't think that's the kind of harm that you're trying to necessarily address.
They can have the same kind of percentage.
But do we really want to, again, that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from is I don't want.
Taking a hammer to a very small male.
It's, 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 you're, you're, I think you're getting too constrained to black and white, right? Like I, I don't know the best analogy and I'm bad with analogies, but and what I do, we always, you know, we represent hospitals and doctors. And so, you know, we always have plans attorneys who are pointing to, you know, this imaging says this, this lab value says this. And we always say, I don't care what one thing says, we're gonna put it in the whole clinical context of what's going on. Uh, so this, I don't, just because it, you put it over a number, doesn't really mean much to me. Um, if, if the harm is having this major development, which way really changed how the town, um, you know, feels, I don't think a thousand square foot addition to big Y is gonna be that.
What if they wanted to do twenty thousand?
Then, then it's more.
We're gonna codify what ifs.
They want to do twenty thousand square feet because there's probably a need to put twenty thousand square feet. If a business is gonna invest and to put twenty thousand square feet onto their, their, their place of work, it's because they're expecting potential growth. Now, potential growth is their bottom line. Now, being a business owner also, I didn't do it to make people happy, which is, actually, I really do do that, but we're in the business to make money. That's what we do. Okay? Businesses are in the business to make money. They're not here for you to see mushrooms growing in a field. They're in business to make money. So they make decisions based on that. So what you're trying to do with these is taking away their ability to do that. No, based on, based on something that you're saying two years down the road, that may be accepted by something that's really just suggested. That's putting a lot of control. That's a lot, well, so is everything on here.
See.
It's, it's, it's the, this is control. This is just simply saying, I'm mad about what happened and this is what we're gonna do about it. But this is what it boils down to. It's putting control. Now, nothing, I've been in this town since nineteen ninety-five and I never see anything what happened, what happened because of Carvana. Yep, there's the dirty word. I threw it on the table. Because of Carvana, this is what we're dealing with. What else are we dealing with? We're dealing with time clocks that never end. No, I'm not. Trust me. I'm not. I'm just simply saying, you, you, you asked and I'm telling with a passion. Because I care about this town too. Just like you do. You stood on the sides of the street screaming and yelling that you disagreed. And that's what your right is to do. So is mine. And it's done with passion.
And it ended up resulting in that nasty thing not coming to town, that special permit process, whether the chairperson believes that we would have found a legal route via our bylaws to deny said evil special permit. The process happened. That's the purpose of our bylaws. That's the purpose of the planning board. That's the purpose of public involvement on a public hearing of a special permit event. Now, that was a very specific where it hit. It's bad because of this. It's bad because of the, the impervious surfaces. It's bad for traffic. It's bad for the, I mean, it's all around. It had all these bad points to it. And that seems to be where you've taken the outline from it, that and the decoy street condos to make sure that everything is below fifty units. I personally feel that this is a hammer to a solution to a problem that doesn't necessarily exist. As I just said, the, the problem presented itself and through process, however ugly it might have been, it resulted in the outcome that protected what you're looking for.
Yeah, but.
The actual, well, there may be gaps. And then the presumption then, this also presumes that the master plan subcommittee is going to come back with a recommendation of a master plan that is going to result in bylaw changes or restrictions to growth in this town that are going to align with these. I, I'm not done.
It may not.
Um, it also, like I said, it puts restrictions on two floors where so like you, you presented this as your thought process, but we're finding some gaps, including things like you're not considering a second floor addition. You're not considering that you don't have any idea how many trips are generated by a potential business as they currently exist. If somebody comes in and they don't even come close to sixty thousand square feet, but they're gonna trip the trip generation? Are we gonna say, no, I'm sorry, you can't have more employees? No, I'm sorry, you can't ship out new product? Because we're, we stopped this. We were really scared that something bad's gonna come in. So we put this blanket down, so you can't do it. Additionally, I do not think we should ever, and if we go forward with this at all, to put a restriction on an existing business, we shouldn't be involved in that. I wouldn't be getting behind that. I think it codifies an anti-growth mindset that we've already, we've already been established in the public sphere as, you don't want to deal with Southwood. They're not gonna approve your special permit. You don't want to go there. We don't need to codify it. It's already out there. I don't think we need to really worry about a crazy big project coming in. And again, if we do, y'all are right here. You're gonna see it coming and you're gonna be vocal about it. And then additionally, like I first pointed out when this first came forward and Mr. Goddard shared some things, how it could actually technically occur in regards to an overabundance of permits or applications coming in to avoid this. Um, I'm probably won't use the correct technical terms, but a freeze plan or, you know,
A zoning freeze.
A zone increase where somebody comes and they say, oh, well, this is coming. I'm gonna put in an erroneous application and then it's done. And this doesn't apply. So you're encouraging a dishonesty between applicants in the board and the town. Because hey, I might want a fifty-five unit subdivision, but alright, alright, well Diane says we can only have fifty, it's forty-nine.
But that's an inherent flaw in any bylaw change, right?
It is an inherent flaw, but so then it's an additional flaw to an already flawed thing that I feel is a response not to a problem that I don't, again, don't necessarily think exists.
That's the issue. I, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that's the issue, right? It's, and, and, and I don't know, it's not an unreasonable position. I, but I think it's the issue that, I don't know if we go anywhere because of that, right? If you don't think it exists, then there's no harm to address. And so, right?
And I just want to add, I'm a conservation person. I've attended the last two farm aids that have been local. I am, I am down for keeping it green and not doing something crazy. Ask these guys. I am the one with the more green looking people, but I also don't believe in taking away people's rights and, and tamping down small businesses and outside of big Y and tractor supply in the town as most of us are. You know, if Tynick landscaping wants to expand and they're, they're probably not even close to that, but they very well may end up generating a lot more trips. Sorry, Scott Lehman, you're a great guy. You're a great businessman. You're on our master plan subcommittee, but too bad. You have to wait. I just can't get behind.
It's temporary.
Again, but, but the world doesn't work in temporary. People are getting money right now, but we're trying to get the economy opening up. And if you have a small business who says, I can do it. I can do it right now. I have the, the ability to expand my business, to get more employees, to do some good for this town, and we're just asking, no.
I'll take five off the table. Can I ask? When you say that, that if the business like big Y, the scale that big Y has right now, if they wanted to double the size of their footprint, for whatever reason, because business is growing, whatever it is, the special permit process currently would allow for deep examination and introspection to make sure that that is potentially prevented.
I, I, I do. I, I, and as somebody who spent twenty-plus hours researching cell phone tower issues and hiking through wooded, snow-blaneted areas with my three-year-old in tow. Yes, I feel like our special permit process allows for a lot of introspection and a lot of care. And we've added the additional bylaw change that allows us to bring in consultants. Um, and as you can see, I mean, we've.
Does it allow them for the question of the public itself advocating for the public good? Because that's the purpose of all the bylaws. Don't necessarily want to come into town now because they kind of know the reputation of Southwood. That's due to the form without cry and, you know, the grassroots effort that happened.
So I don't want to codify that.
Well, where does the public have to say your special permitting process? Because that was not codified in this last incident. It's because of the grassroots swell. So what?
But it was public comment. The grass in it, I won't, I won't get into the here and there, what started first, but the grass, but the grassroots started.
What you have, you create a hundred and two hundred people in a country meeting, they would yell and scream and they would act like.
If I can say two things. First of all, in answer to your question is, the process is an open public meeting. And so it depends on a. It's already there. You just, you just gotta show up.
Because that's a way to keep it a little bit more constrained. Otherwise, we have, you know, people going off the rails and it gets ugly. That's the.
Yeah, yeah, like, like screaming and yelling to have forensic studies into my personal finances to find out where I got money from Carvana. No, no, but that's what everybody was doing. My wife was so upset.
But.
But that doesn't matter because you, you made your point.
I'm gonna make a motion. We gotta continue this to another session here. There's other things to consider. This is not specific enough. It won't pass much.
Well. I just want to make sure, just think about this. Right now, in our special permits, one of the things it says is, the use will reasonably, will be reasonably compatible with the character and scale of other uses permitted in, as a right in the same district. There's a lot of gray there, right? You have to have a lot of trust in your board to be able to interpret that gray and apply it appropriately, right? Hold on, hold on, and we were. But as soon as you put down that reasonable within scale is sixty thousand square feet, everybody in Arkansas is gonna show up with fifty-nine thousand, nine ninety-nine, and we won't have a leg to stand on to stop it.
Exactly.
So be very careful about what you put in there, because right now, the gray is something that we can use to our advantage to make sure that we're actually allowing things that we do think are reasonably within the scope of the thing. And we don't have to worry about, well, they were able to sneak their way in through the specifics of the letterable law, not really in the spirit of law. This has much stronger spirit in the law.
I would just like to add one thing. Jessica was, you know, talking about everything she put into this. This wasn't done just by me. This was with consultants. This was looking at the bylaws from, I don't know, eight, nine, how many different towns did I extract from ten different towns? I personally spent from June to now working on this. This isn't lightheartedly. Understand that. This is not in blind rage. This isn't in anger. This is this side of the aisle. This is, they're a lot. This is a restricting road that never was.
That may not be your intent, but it is certainly the message that it sends. And it could very well be the end result of it.
Let me, let me say one thing. Because and I think we shared, I think we shared with Diane's original proposal, after her research, I think was shared with the board. Um, was not a moratorium. It is to sort of increase the depth of review for large developments in town. And it has specific processes in place to do that. That's her original proposal. You know, I, I think it's a worthwhile one. I think it was somewhat conservative is my memory and I haven't looked at it in a while. But that was the original proposal. I personally don't think that trying to discuss that, pass it at a town meeting when the master plan committee is considering things is a useful exercise. I think waiting until that process is done before we start making significant bylaw changes about process and things like that is worthwhile. I'm the one who suggested to her about the moratorium. It's on me. But in my mind, it is a temporary fix to the potential harm. But I want to make sure that you understand that her focus has been the process itself. This is more a band-aid to get you to the next step. So moratorium's on me. So if you want to turn to the other thing and start discussing the other thing, we can certainly do that. Uh, to me, you guys are not that much different from, I've had discussions with you and discussions with you guys, as from, from. a business standpoint, you guys aren't that different. I just think that you are, you're sort of looking at it from this spectrum. She's looking at this spectrum and to narrowly tailor, you guys got to come a lot closer than what you are and, and not be on either side because I don't think you guys are philosophically that far apart. I, Diane's a business person and, and understands business and I think respects the business in town. And I don't think you guys are that far apart. I just think finding the language and finding the common path is difficult and it's going to be difficult. I may not get there, but I, I just don't think you guys are that different. Yeah, but.
I think we understand you.
But blame me.
I think, but blame me.
My biggest concern really is that one.
Words on a paper might not necessarily be filled by those words, you know what I'm saying?
That's a surprise.
I understand. I, I think we all can understand what we generally are looking for. But getting a piece of paper and really thinking through all the ways that somebody else is going to come look at that piece of paper and come from a different angle and try to maybe exploit it. We got to be really careful about it. At the same time, not being overly restricted in cases that we really don't want to be restricted. Big Y wants to put a 250 square foot addition on the outside. I don't care. I mean, we'll look at it or review it. It's not a major development. That's. If you want to put a 250,000 square foot development on it, yeah, that's something huge.
And this is one of the reasons why I think this process is good for doing this, getting through the planning board is because, you know, with things like this, especially a moratorium, but even with the underlying process issue, you need to run through all the potential, you know, slippery slopes and, you know, potential bad outcomes that could come from that bylaw. And this is, I think, part of that process and that's a good thing. I, I just think, you know, there has to be a lot more tailoring of it to what the harm could potentially be. And, you know, I just, I mean, I do disagree with you guys. I think there's, I was much more concerned about the legal ability to deny large permits like that in industrial zones. I mean, I'm much more concerned about that than I think you guys are, but that's fine.
Well, we kind of need to decide which, which path are we going to go on? Are we going to go on the bylaw moratorium or are we going to go on this? What do we do? What is the guidance, the handbook, the analysis that's needed special on large, however they're defined, developments?
Well, my suggestion at 1037 would be that
What?
At the next meeting, you guys have both the moratorium and you have the underlying bylaw. We can look at those and we can discuss those at the next meeting. And if you have suggested narrowing, you know, please feel free to.
But I presented here. Very detailed thing and then I tried to put it on a small piece of paper.
So again, but you know, I, I'm.
I mean, I might need to take the parts of the bylaw that you like and let's try to fix the pain.
I think having the discussion is a worthwhile exercise.
Look at embers.
I'm going to bring something right across the table. I really like the person who's trying to write the bylaw. This is just business and I think the world of you.
No, thank you. But don't get angry.
I wasn't. I wasn't. I'm Italian. You want to shut me up, tie my hands.
Public outcry in June and July, you'd have thought we were all good with that.
No.
No.
See, and that was the other thing that bothered me about that whole thing and this, this, the idea that the planning board didn't have.
Yeah.
We were just like, oh, yeah.
You probably shouldn't even open this can of worms because I'm telling you.
Hold on, Dave. Can I finish my point?
Yeah.
You kind of interrupted me. Thanks.
But.
The idea was that we never even got a chance to delve into the darn thing. It came before us once. Our people were already on it, not as many obviously, and within a month, we, like, we only had one meeting on it in June because it was the beginning of the summer. And it exploded. You never got to hear what my thoughts were, other than the, the very pointed question that I had about vehicles coming in and out of town, out of our different roads and how they weren't going to be capable of handling those loads. Do you remember that? So it's not like we were all just sitting there like, let it all come. So that's.
And, and we, we didn't have the faith that we didn't care.
We knew you cared. We just didn't, I just didn't like the suggestion that my personal finances be, because if you want to go listen to the brakes on my car, maybe Carvana should come enough.
Can I say that that was never me? And that was never her. That was never the leaders of that, right? Okay, it's never.
I ain't got no money for you to dig into. So if you want to come, come.
I know you guys got threats.
Yep.
So did we. So.
I was going to bring out the Festive Poll next.
I'm sorry.
If you haven't learned that by every.
Hey, listen, you were heading for a huff, right? All back up again.
All right. We're going to continue this.
Anybody still paying attention?
Really?
Wrap this up.
I'm making that motion.
Are we getting out early next time?
Yeah.
I got, I got a boiler job tomorrow. What's on the list that doesn't?
I'm going to defer.
Yeah, we got two.
Oh, all right.
10th and 23rd.
Everybody good with the 10th?
Oh, no.
Auto pen, my weird.
I put a pair of.
No, no minutes?
Can you keep this stuff in the folder for me, sir?
Did you make your motion?
I made the motion to close the meeting.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Yay, 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 yay.